So we'll start the meeting. We'll do start with the salute to the flag. Okay, thank you. I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America.
The Republic which stands. Nation under God.
Uh, roll call please.
Ms. Clark. Ms. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Dakota.
Yeah.
Mr. Dylan.
Here.
Ms. Doherty.
Here.
Mr. Hoey. Mayor Leahy.
Here.
Ms. Martin.
Here.
Seven present.
Okay, so um, just before we get started, we'll just um, when we come up to to um, motions or information that people want to speak on, um, we probably should just go right down the line in order of tonight's roll call. So um, at certain points, I'll just ask for Ms. Clark and Mr. Dakota and so on down the line, then maybe with the next section, we'll start from Ms. Martin and go back to the other one. So uh, so just for a point of reference. Madam Clerk, you're there?
Yes.
Okay, so for three special order of business. Is there anything, what do you, we doing anything with that or that's just there?
Yep, that's just there. If you want, you can read it just so the public knows.
All right, all right. So special order of business, three point one. Uh, this meeting is being held remotely in accordance with the governor of Massachusetts, uh, March 12th, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, uh, 30A, section 20. Um, so now we'll get into four. Need approval of the minutes of the regular scheduled Lowell School Committee meeting Wednesday, March 4th, 2020. Um, okay, so we need. Okay, place in other, were there any subcommittees though, Madam Clerk?
Yes, they appear later on the agenda.
Oh, that's okay. All right. So I need a motion to approve these by Ms. Clark, seconded by Mr. Dakota. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Uh, next we have permission to enter. Mr. Superintendent.
Yes, permission to enter for this month's meeting are listed within your packet, the recommendations of approval as written.
Okay. There was one question in my packet for community teamwork. Is that off the table?
There are two separate uh, items there. You have a permission to enter one and a permission to enter two. Uh, one of those includes the community teamwork item, uh, separated for Ms. Martin.
Is, is that the um, amend the existing contract though of round trip transportation?
Um, Ms. Turner, can you share?
Can you, can you hear me? The first one was several um, out of district tuition contracts that Rob and Desmond can answer to. The second one is the CTI permission to enter and we separated those so that Ms. Martin could step out during that time.
All right, I'm only seeing.
The CTI one is on, um, I believe it's on five point two. It's two separate permission to enter.
Um.
Uh, Mayor Leahy, you have the same hard packet you're looking at that I'm looking at. Your last item in the hard packet was separated out in the agenda as the second item on permission to enter. So the community teamwork item that you see within your pack.
All right, this is my understanding that was, that was off the table tonight. We don't need transportation. Ms. Turner?
No, we still, we reduced the amount to seventy-five hundred. Um, they, while they negotiated a new price. So it's still on to amend the existing contract to provide round trip transportation, but with the seventy-five hundred now rather than fifty-five thousand.
Okay, but what's that for though? For in case we get back to school, you mean?
Yes, for homeless transportation, yes. So we have to be ready in advance, otherwise we're violating contract laws.
Um.
I do have a clarification from Mr. Dakota, Mayor, if you want me to read it.
Yeah, sure.
Um, the number of students transported has tripled in numbers since the original contract was approved. Thus, this amendment is being brought forth to pay the additional amounts for January and February. However, the amendment can only be twenty-five percent of the original contract amount. Thus, the requested seventy-five hundred. The new contract will be brought forward to the school committee later this fiscal year to approve monies for the ten days in March, any additional school days that schools in session.
Jim, for clarification by Mr. Dakota, you're referring to John Dakota, not Andy Dakota for the minute.
Correct, thank you for that.
Okay, so um, Ms. Turner, a couple more questions. Um, so the Great Minds PBC, um, purchased additional student workbooks, teacher books, digital suit on license. Um, McGraw-Hill purchased social study books, materials uh, for tool line six and seven and there was one other, but um, I guess maybe to, to you, Ms. Turner, or to you, Mr. Superintendent, um, uh, what, should we be spending this money at this time? Like, are we gonna need this money for what we are preparing to do for the rest of this school year?
Yeah, we feel confident in the, in our financial position right now that there's uh, obviously, this is all a rapidly evolving circumstance, but if you recall, uh, at the beginning of the year, there were some questions about delayed curriculum resources coming out through schools and to teachers. This enables us right now to make sure that we can meet all of our teacher needs at the beginning of next school year. Uh, but a permission to enter doesn't require us to engage in the contract itself. It just enables us to move forward with that process. Uh, we do feel confident with this dollar amount here, as well as the dollars that are remaining at the district disposal, that we are in a adequate position to both make it through this year as well as be prepared for next year. These materials are for uh, the materials that our teachers are gonna need to start up the year immediately on April 1, uh, getting that process going sooner, uh, rather than what had been historically done. Uh, there were some concerns with delays and curriculum materials making their way to the classroom this past year.
Okay, all right. So are there any questions from the committee?
Good.
Hearing, hearing none. Um, so I need a motion to approve. Um.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, who's that?
Yeah, um, it's Mike Dillon.
Okay, go, I missed Dillon, yeah.
Uh, through you to the superintendent, can you just uh, speak on panorama and the other one there, um, they, they seem like they are for resources for the rest of the school year, maybe?
The panorama, thank you, uh, committee member Dillon, uh, through the chair. Uh, the panorama relates to our portrait of a graduate work. Uh, these are online resources and stuff we can do digitally uh, to remain in, moving forward with that particular grant. Ms. Phillips is online and can respond to specific questions. Ms. Phillips, can you share a little bit with committee member Dillon?
Sure, so that's part of moving our portrait of a grant forward. Um, we are, we received funding for January 1st through December 30th, and that's to um, survey our students around um, their, their educational experience. So sense of belonging, um, cultural responsiveness of their learning environments. Um, it, it's an opportunity for us to um, receive that feedback on how we can improve that school environment.
Great, I guess the Apex, um, is the one that I probably had more of a question on. What exactly are they providing us with?
Yeah, so Apex is our online resource, uh, that enables us to do distance learning. We currently have that running at our Career Academy. So this would enable us to expand the licenses out for act for uh, all students, grades six through 12. Currently, we're doing it, we're providing it just for a small number of students at Career Academy. So we're familiar with this software, we're familiar with this curriculum, and it is the curriculum that would enable our children to access learning at home. Uh, we're in the midst right now, today, we just began a home book distribution. Uh, we're gonna continue that and accelerate that forward. So this enables us to also expand out our digital platform with Apex Learning.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from any other members? Uh, hearing none, make a motion by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Hoey to accept the first seven permission enters. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. I think you have to do a roll call.
We need a roll call.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry, yeah.
Ms. Clark? Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Seven aces.
Um, okay, so Ms. Martin, you're gonna mute or leave the room or something? I need a motion to accept the last um, permission to enter by Ms., Mr. Dillon, seconded by Mr. Dakota, roll call.
Ms. Clark? Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Six aces, one absent, approved.
Okay. Um. Okay, Ms. Martin's coming back.
Yes, I've unmuted her.
Okay. Um, next we have memorials. Um, we have memorials for Paula Abraham, retired teacher in the Lowell Public Schools. Violet Santamara, retired teacher, Lowell Public Schools. Uh, she was a hundred and four years old, bless her. Uh, Robert Hand Jr., Lowell High Custodian, School Custodian. And Marilyn Gill, uh, she happens to be my aunt, mother of Mary Jeffrey and grandmother of Gina Marte at the freshman academy. Um, may they rest in peace. Uh, motions. First motion by Mr. Dakota. Ask superintendent, uh, ask superintendent, ask city manager what the status is of the judicial building in the city. If they are available for city use, the Lowell Public School use, one or two of them. Seconded by Mr. Hoey. Mrs. Dakota?
Thank you. I, I think the motion kind of speaks for itself. I'm, I'm hearing that there, there isn't much available, but at least we can ask and see if there is something available that we could possibly use. Uh, I, I'm not even sure any of them would be useful for us uh, for retrofitting uh, classrooms and so forth. So, but at least if, if we could look into it, it would be, uh, it might help us out.
Sure, thank you. It's always good to check them out. Any further discussion? Sure, Mr. Dillon?
Yeah, I think this is great. Uh, this is a, somebody should be looking into it. Mr. Mayor, if the school department doesn't end up with them, we should, you know, we should be asking uh, what their plans are. I feel like they would hand them over if we wanted them. I don't know, but.
Yeah, they, they do go to um, state offices, would have first crack at them. Then it would uh, go over to the city. Um, I believe we did check them out for city use and found out that they were gonna be very expensive to rehab. Um, but again, we can check the school side and see if there's any use for the school side. Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Uh, seven, two, motion by Mr. Hoey that the superintendent produce a report by April 1st, uh, which you will talk about changing the date, uh, to meet the following information. Charting out uh, expenditures for the year. Uh, with, um, maybe that sped expenditures by the year for the last fifteen years or as far back as possible. Um, number of total special education budgets, percentage of kids receiving special location services, amount of money spent on district services, percentage of children utilizing out of district services, number of employees working so, in special education, and total number of employees within district per year. Seconded by Ms. Clark, Mr. Hoey.
Thank you, uh, yeah, um. This motion, I had it in a couple of weeks and I know it's been delayed a lot for obvious reasons. We have more important things uh, to talk about, but right now, uh, this, all I really wanted to bring this motion up for is for information for me. Cause I've always been concerned why special ed is growing so fast. I, I don't have all the answers, but yeah, I wanna know basically as far back as we could get percentage of the budget we spent on special education back then and just show the total number of students that were receiving special ed back then. And uh, like you said, the third one was uh, how many people are out of district. But the most important part for me, when we talk about the total number of employees, we hear a lot about how we're top heavy, you got the LSAA, which is uh, loaded with people that I think that are so important, especially for special education. You know, we have psychologists, social workers, BCBAs, speech pathologists, uh, occupational therapists, physical therapists, teachers, parers, EPCs, and the list goes on. So I think when we show the public and you show new, uh, new committee members and other people that it's, it's a big deal, special ed. And that's why I know it's, we need to change the date. I appreciate the importance. April 1st was the date I was saying because it was a month ago. But go back as far as you can without bogging yourselves down. But I really wanted that information because I don't know why it grows so fast. Thank you for the time, man. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any discussion? Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Um, what do we, do we have a date? Sorry.
Sure, go ahead, Dillon.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's still reads April 1st, right?
Right, I would say as much time as they need. I just want information, Mike.
Yeah, I, I, um, putting a date on it right now is tough, just with all, everything that's going on.
Sure.
Good, thank you. Uh, next motion by myself, request superintendent update the committee on the district plan to support the 2020 uh, United States, seconded by Mr. Hoey. Um, motion speaks for itself and lighter what's going on, just kind of looking for um, what we can do to assist the census. Um, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Seven, four, motion by Andy Dakota. Ask superintendent to provide a report at the next school committee meeting on the legal ramifications of remote learning as it applies to our sped population. Seconded by Mr. Dillon, Mr. Dakota.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I, I think there's another motion that speaks for itself and I think we have to, you know, tread through these waters very carefully. I think we need to make sure that if we're um, remote learning or remote teaching that, that all of our students are going to be serviced and, and that, that means our sped kids. And I, I, I don't know how efficiently we're gonna be able to do that. Um, we may be able to efficiently do that, but I think we need to get uh, a, uh, an input to the legality of it and uh, um, whether, how, to what level we can accomplish that right across the whole level, Lowell Public Schools.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Eight, subcommittees. Um, curriculum and instruction subcommittee meeting, approval of the minutes, uh, Wednesday, March 4th. Bonnie Martin, chairperson, any further comments, Ms. Martin?
I know I had already presented at the last school committee meeting, uh, so this is just the written minutes for the record.
Okay, so just need a motion to accept by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Hoey. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then policy subcommitting, uh, meeting, we, Ms. Doherty, any further comments? Are you all set on that one too?
Uh, no, I reported out on that at our last meeting, so this would just be a motion to submit us for the records.
Okay, thank you. So motion by Ms. Dart, uh, by Mr. Hoey, seconded by Ms. Doherty to approve. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Uh, nine, now we're onto the reports of superintendent. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Committee members, uh, the first report is a follow-on uh, to a motion by board, uh, by committee member Doherty. Also, an update for the committee that was intended in advance of April 1, because April 1 prior to the pandemic enclosure was the deadline for filing our Student Opportunity Act, uh, plan. That deadline has been changed. Uh, we are awaiting yet what the date will be. We have received notice that the, the date is pending a change in uh, uh, with the legislature. Uh, as well as we've heard multiple updates from the city, uh, there are questions that uh, the current forecast for the budget may also be something that is being discussed. We have not received any information about that. Uh, however, with both those, the date being changed for the uh, April 1, you likely as a committee will be receiving the Student Opportunity Act in uh, concert with the strategic plan and also the budget. I wouldn't anticipate that you're gonna be receiving the staggered reporting as previously required. Nonetheless, uh, this pack, this has been in your packet uh, for some time. Uh, and what uh, I believe my team does is you can see it on your screen. If there's any questions that the committee has, we can move through the pack, uh, the presentation based on the questions. Uh, Ms. Desmond will uh, um, will provide any kind of responses that you may need. For community members, the Student Opportunity Act was an adjustment in chapter 70 funding in terms of both the amount as well as the calculation. Uh, ultimately, this is how our budget, the vast majority of our dollars operate through our budget. Uh, this presentation was uh, compiled several weeks ago, uh, prior to the closure, and this included where our budgeting process stood at that time. Uh, based on the validity of the current time, we have not updated this presentation, but we do stand for any questions that we may have.
Okay, any questions from the committee?
Good, John? Sure, Ms. Martin? Perfect, thank you. Uh, my only, you know, my, my real question, I think, has to do with kind of the, the bigger picture budget questions that we'll be answering and all that. My thought would be, uh, Mr. Superintendent, for us to wait until we do the, your COVID report and we could perhaps do that then.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, committee member Martin, I was assuming that, that uh, the coronavirus update is the thing that would be of interest for the community as well as the committee, and that report is worth coming within your packet. And Ms. Phillips will be sharing that out, uh, on item 9.3 for the community members.
Yeah, yes, I've seen the agenda. I just need to be sure that we, it would make most sense to talk about it in that, in that area. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Sure, Mr. Dillon?
Uh, yeah, through you, Dr. Boyd. Um, there's a section under supporting educators, um, and you know, talks about technology and um, proving the hardware that we have. Has there been talk about uh, moving to a lease program or a, um, are, are we, are we looking at that at all?
Yes, absolutely. Uh, actually, every conversation that we have includes both of those things, the benefit to purchase versus lease. Often with how fast uh, technology moves and becomes obsolete, we often find that the leasing agreements work better. Uh, Ms. Desmond oversees our technology department within the academic office and can answer specific questions, but the short answer is yes.
Uh, we're looking at it, cause right now, we don't, we don't do that, correct?
Ms. Desmond?
That's correct. Um, our, we had um, leased prior to, um, actually, um, Ms. Turner probably can answer this question better. Um, but I believe it was um, FY18, the lease ended, and we did not uh, renegotiate the lease as of budgetary constraints at that time. Uh, we have continued to invest in Chromebooks, so when we have additional um, technology funding in Title I and other areas, we have committed to making those purchases and we have been doing that regularly since that lease expired. Um, but yes, we have looked at uh, the significant investment that um, the superintendent has committed to for next year, providing that our um, chapter 70 money continues um, to come in as what we're expecting. Um, and that would be looking at a multi-year lease situation.
All right, yeah, then it just seems to be something that we should consider getting back.
Yes, absolutely.
Uh, Mayor?
Maybe we're starting to use technology right now.
For one minute.
Yep, I'm, I'm done, thank you, Mr. Dillon.
Thank you, Mr. Dillon. Mr. Hoey?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I just wanna say for the past, I feel the past at least four years, maybe even five, maybe we took my scene, budgets come up, or we talked about technology, uh, we didn't pay much attention to it. Actually, I think it's probably been at the bottom of the ladder. And now that we have this big issue, it's gonna come up to the top of the ladder. Uh, so, you know, I, I'm not blaming anybody. It's nobody's fault. We had other priorities at those times and things were running smooth, but now technology's a big deal. So when Mr. Dillon asks questions like that, and yeah, we, we haven't paid attention to the high-tech field at all, in my opinion. And um, I think we have to, so that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other further comments?
Uh, John, can I ask a question? Sorry.
Yep.
Yeah, sorry. Um, if you look at, and I'm gonna have to pull it up, the page 25, under remaining budget considerations. I just had a question. Um, my understanding, based on our earlier discussion, was there was gonna be two million distributed out through the district for the schools. Uh, that last bullet on pay, on remaining budget considerations, I'm wondering if someone could explain that. Uh, based on a review of data and priorities we've gathered from internal and external stakeholders, there's an additional immediate need for resources within schools of 7.8 million. Um, I wonder if you could explain that, Dr. Boyd? What, how does that relate to the two million that's gonna be shared within the schools?
Yeah, the two million is uh, provided out to school within a full-based budget. What you see within your uh, presentation accounts for that two million plus additional need that would relate to meeting each of these goals that are outlined within the Student Opportunity Act Plan. Uh, so if you total up each of those uh, bullets that are provided, uh, and within those as a short kind of brief summary, uh, moving to a place where all four-year-olds have access to early learning, including full-day options, uh, providing all of our turnaround schools the same supplemental support within their budget as uh, as the Robinson received. One-to-one access for grades four through 12 with digital uh, mobile devices, as well as one-to-two access for K through three, as well as providing uh, within school, alternative options for youngsters of high need within our five-through-12 environment. All of that together uh, will amount to 7.8 million dollars beyond the two million that's already within.
So that's money we don't have. You're just saying we would need that to really do what we should do?
Correct. So there's additional decisions we've gotta make to scale that back. You remember, this was back early March that we put this together to release for the uh, school committee meeting. At that time, fully, should be well anticipated that we would still have some budget work to do to reduce down, further prioritize, still going through the strategic planning process. Uh, so also, if you look at, this also did not account for, if you look on page 26, bottom bullet, the important note highlighted in red.
Right.
All right, none of these cost estimates, uh, more than eighty-five percent of our total budget is in personnel costs and none of these cost estimates, which uh, still led to the additional money being needed. Uh, so 6.2 was, was available, we used two million, 4.2 remains available, 7.8 million dollars of need. You got then, you go down to uh, or 5.8 million dollars of need to 1.6 million dollars. That doesn't account for the increased operating costs that would be incurred if we negotiated additional salary uh, raises with staff. Uh, and there you can see the estimation is 1.3 million for every one percentage point negotiated. So it's just a long, uh, a detailed summary of saying we have a lot of budget work left to do. These should be looked at as kind of the broad uh, buckets of goals that we were hearing feedback uh, from multiple stakeholders. We weren't gonna be able to meet all of them, we know, but we would, so we'd have further prioritization to do uh, and need some further feedback on. But we can do, you can see here kind of the direction we're headed, which was the, the value, I think, in the presentation.
Could I just follow with one more quick question? Sorry. Um, I, in that amount, that initial um, 6.5 million that you took out of the 12.7 right from the gate, does that include the 1.9 million of, of increased uh, costs for district central office positions? Is that included in that number?
No, the 6.5 million includes the embedded step increases for staff, as well as the increased uh, healthcare premium.
So where is the uh, central office funding? Where is that pulled out of this number?
This number is the incremental increase of. This number is the incremental increase of uh, student opportunity act. So there's no incremental increase necessary there. That was already in the past budget year. So you're, this is your, what all that's required with the student opportunity act is the increase. So this is new stuff we're doing.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Um.
Mayor? Ms. Clark?
Yep. Um, Dr. Boyd, just curious, um, how or what would have been the next, what are the next steps for uh, further prioritizing how we look to uh, spend this money? Um, with all of these different options, you know, knowing we can't do it all, what, what is the plan to continue prioritization?
Yeah, so we're uh, two things immediately. We're continuing to move forward. Uh, the data gathering with the strategic planning process, we'll have that. Uh, but we're planning to conclude that by the end of this month still. Obviously, we've had to change our format of that data gathering, but we're working through that process in synthesis. That's one. Uh, two is we've got to look to the various other alternatives perhaps. Uh, when you talk about, for instance, early learning, this uses the cost estimate around our current model. And if we expand it out, we know that needs to be prioritized early learning, but what other opportunities exist there? We have a lot of partners we work with across the city. We're currently working through that. And then also uh, three is then going through each of these and all of that data that we gather then to uh, to make sure that we pay for those things that are the highest priority first, and then we'll move those others to year two before a strategic plan.
Thank you.
Ms. Mayor?
Yes. Ms. Martin, who, oh, who is that?
I would like to say something, but I don't know if I'm that.
Yeah, you can go next. Yeah. And then Mr. Howie.
Great. So since we are now talking about the budget um, now, um, I, I would just like to kind of, I appreciate your answers, Superintendent Boyd, but I do think that, and I don't want to speak about Ms. Clark, but I think we are looking for something a little more structured about how we're going to kind of change our process. Given the situation we're in right now, I think us having the ability to see kind of what, how this prioritization process is going to spin out would be extremely helpful for us. Um, so I think that that's part as we move forward of recognizing that all the work that you did, that Turner, that your whole team have done up until this point may in fact, may in fact go by the wayside. And so I think that I, I, us understanding what your and your team's approach is going to be, um, should the floor drop out from under us, and I, I really do believe we need to plan for that. Um, is, I think would be extremely helpful, just because I, I do think that we're in a different world from even a week and a half ago. Um, and I think the resources we're going to be looking at are going to be dramatically diminished. I, that's just my individual read on the situation as I'm, what's coming out of this from, you know, the, the, the areas that I'm involved with professionally. Um, it's going to, I think we're going to be looking at a very, very different situation. And I think we would all want to be able to see kind of how, how you and your administration are planning to anticipate that. And then, you know, share that with us, planning for it.
Yes, absolutely.
I love a simple yes. That's great.
Yeah. Good, good point. Uh, Mr. Howie?
Uh, thanks, Mayor. Um, the student opportunity act, I just want to make a few comments about that. The Senate, uh, they worked very hard and they understood that we need all that extra money, that two point seven five million. Uh, they knew it. And at this time, I don't think they want it to fall apart. Uh, the city manager is not here tonight with us, but when she is, the words that stay with me about her and the superintendent when they get together is right now the main word would be uncertainty. We're not sure. And a word that I love is patience. I don't think we have to jump off the cliff yet. I think we got a great system here. Uh, I think this administration so far, as far as what I've seen, has done incredible things in the past few months. My job's been easy. Look, I'm sitting in my house drinking water and having coffee and um, I'm really serious about this. I got a good feeling about the, you know, maybe we might have to look and help the state out. That's how that might get. I, and then we'll see who really loves education because we know we needed more money. Uh, going back years, the, the, uh, the word was inclusiveness, be inclusive. And um, and we are. So I, I have a lot. I'm not a pessimist. I believe great things are coming. Uncertainty is here and we need to have some patience. That's, thank you, Graham. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, thanks. Um, nine, two, Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. I want to defer, I'm gonna uh, defer the floor to Mr. Georges. Nine, two is the UTL item. Uh, President Georges.
You need to unmute him, Jim.
I got him.
You got it?
You should, yes, can you hear us, Paul?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I know this is unusual circumstances. Uh, but we did want to talk about uh, a survey that was conducted by uh, the UTL of its members. Uh, actually, it started back on January fifteenth. Uh, through February fourth, we received data from members. Uh, it was a significant amount of data with seventy percent of our teachers responding uh, of eleven hundred and three. We had seven hundred and seventy-one that responded. And forty percent of our professionals, we could pull a hundred and seven, and a hundred and sixty-two responded, which is a significant number. There was a breakdown on the next page of exactly, uh, there it is. Uh, thank, thank uh, Dr. Hall for helping uh, with this one. Uh, telling you who they were that actually participated. Uh, it said to me, our purpose was, we knew the student opportunity act was coming. And we knew that there were chronic difficulties in some schools that we felt would be appropriately addressed with the additional revenues coming in. It seemed to us that it made a lot of sense to try to identify what acted as the greatest impediments to teachers teaching and students learning in classes. And try to address those issues before going into long-term planning of that these didn't become chronic. It makes it very, very difficult to go forward with plans if you haven't accommodated the needs that are addressed in, in the, in the regular classroom. We figured nobody would be better than telling us what they are authentically than obviously the teachers and paraprofessionals that are in those schools. So with that in mind, the survey uh, was conducted. There was tremendous amount of uh, support for it. Uh, again, uh, very large number of people participated and that just ain't like, uh, you know, sort of uh, aids in the legitimacy of what, what, what went on. We did ask our, our uh, our teachers, their, their, their perception of the priorities that was stated by the superintendent. He was on with us on a radio program uh, just previous to that and indicated four primaries that he was looking at, investment in early childhood education, investment in, in expanding both high-performing and high-demand programs, increasing the number of failed seats, aligning secondary school programs, middle and high school to better prepare students for college and career. Uh, and leveraging what's the greatest asset is diversity going forward. When we asked those questions, it ended up that uh, uh, of all that answered, fifty-seven percent said they were not the highest priorities in their perspective. Uh, forty-three percent said they did. So then we went on to ask them about identifying impediments to students, students' learning and teachers' teaching. And uh, we said, think about your classroom, school, rank the following as possible impediments, teachers' teaching and students' learning. As it ended up, uh, there was a fairly elaborate, uh, you know, sort of, uh, how can I put it? Descriptions, but largely they were failing infrastructure. We all know that has been ongoing problem that uh, has been improving, but obviously needs to continue to improve because of the decades of negligence. Uh, lack of resources and tools needed on a daily basis, class size, uh, caseload and lack of uh, personnel supporting students in the classroom. Clarity and timeliness of school and district communications and lack of collaborative environment, which includes staff and teachers. Number one overwhelmingly was disruptive behavior in students' and classrooms. Next one was class sizes and caseloads. We understand very often it is difficult to decrease class size when you have no place to expand, you have no additional classrooms to expand into. And uh, so we, we understand, but those were the two things that were identified as the primary difficulties acting as the greatest impediments to teachers' teaching and students' learning. Now, uh, as we, as we look at this and go fo- forward, uh, I think you have a graphic that's very telling. And that has to do with, uh, and it's kind of a word, poorly worded question, but it said, would the lack of social emotional services support be a critical factor? Uh, in addressing the social emotional health of students, especially those students who are in crisis. And that was a remarkable uh, statistic that came up where ninety-six percent of the respondents said, yes, we need more help for students dealing with social emotional issues. To refer to again in a couple of slides after that in a much different way. Then it says, in thinking about social emotional learning supports for our students, please rank the following items, one to five. Uh, number one was increased behavior and support teams uh, in dealing with the students in crisis, I believe. Increased of behavior teams, support uh, staff available to address students who are in crisis. Uh, streamline is, that's number two was higher additional soc- social workers, behavior specialists, decreased current caseload and increased access to social emotional learning support specialists. And number three was streamlining the referral process for students who need critical support, particularly in terms of placement and alternative programs, whether inside the school or outside the school. Uh, as we go further with this, uh, the next page I think has a uh, disruptive behavior and social emotional support with expansion of alternative placement in a program inside or outside of your school be a benefit to the students with whom you come in contact or teach. Again, uh, overwhelmingly ninety-five percent said yes. Uh, we understand this, they act, it sometimes uh, the disruptive student takes a lot of time from the teacher and it creates an environment that's not conducive to learning. If our job is as adults is to try to produce an environment where kids can learn and teachers can teach, I think that's about our responsibility. Uh, in addressing this, now ironically, as we did this further and looked at it more closely, the highest performing schools had, seem to have solved that problem. Their concerns aren't so much the misbehavior of students. Uh, it's more in line with getting uh, what can I put it? Instruments or tools to be able to reach every child. Uh, there's a different environment, but the majority of the schools obviously exemplified by ninety-five percent. Makes it pretty clear case. Um, what would you like? Uh, I would like more professional development on the following topics. And the, if the issues that came up were social emotional learning, um, uh, then there was a number of others, but self-explanatory. Uh, I think as we go through this survey, uh, I think to be described, uh, excuse me, disruptive behavior and social emotional support identified by the staff as the top priority for PD. Okay, that's pretty easy. Um, pretty easy to identify, and I think it's, it's telling. Some of the things that teachers have said, um, is too many students are misplaced in their uh, regular classroom when they need to be in an adjustment class or some other, some other uh, some other classroom. Uh, we need programs for students who are in crisis and disrupt, disrupt the learning of others in our schools. Uh, we only have one part-time social worker in that particular school. Uh, it, they're looking for help. They're looking for help and supporting the kids who are dealing with social emotional trauma and with the idea of a separate placement being a benefit to them so they can get the specialized services they need and then be returned to the regular classroom and not represent an impediment. Uh, as we go further, staffing needs, uh, we've asked them what they, how they would prioritize it. They talked about hiring more paras. Um, more powers that are specially trained to deal with those issues, hiring more teachers to reduce class size. Uh, hiring more sped and allied, allied health features. Uh, uh, and specialists to deal with those students. We go on to the next one, responses for staff questions. It says, as allied help or as special education, do you feel the caseload in your current situation is? And we asked them, seventy-seven percent said the caseload was too high, twenty-two percent said just about right, and two, one percent said too small. Another question that came was the ratio of special education staff is adequate to meet the needs of students as outlined in IEPs. And you, because classroom teachers uh, have an awareness of the issue under the inclusion model, uh, ninety-two percent of them said that there is not uh, enough support and they're, they're being spread too thin. Uh, I can go a little further here. Restore, restoring previously eliminated programs. Eighty-four percent identified staffing alternative school settings as a top prior. And the example they gave was the McHugh. Um, and then they'll go a little bit further. And again, I, I'm cognizant that I've been told I probably have about ten minutes. Um, uh, I, I mean, I'm trying to get a lot of information in. However, I feel very comfortable if you have questions, you can certainly ask us at this point or ask us uh, at any time. The, the survey, we're just sharing some of the, the, the major hits or the major, the major findings. But as we delve more into the data and start looking from school, school, it tells us additional information. We'd be glad to share with you folks. Uh, in restoring a new kind of classroom, nine, about eighty-nine percent of teachers said we need to do that, we have a need for that. We're doing this under the, un- un- under the understanding that we've been under an austerity sort of program over the last maybe ten to twelve years. And we've resulted in cutting programs, cutting programs, cutting programs. We believe it's in the best interest of the district to try to uh, re, how can I put it? Fund the programs, take care of the place, the places that are creating the most, the, the greatest difficulties within the classroom as we're getting every student. Um, first of all, we found out that when we surveyed our members, ninety-seven percent of our members actually take money out of their own pocket to try to fund their own classroom with essential items. Uh, last year in two thousand nineteen, when we asked that question, the average was about six hundred and seventeen dollars per staff member, which is over the national average of four hundred and fifty-nine dollars according to NEA today. Other issues we identified were uh, issues with school site councils, uh, determining professional needs, standardized testing, conditions of buildings. And I'll touch on that quickly if you indulge me for a few more minutes. Uh, school site councils, we found that school site councils were not handled very well. I think that was self-admitted. Uh, school site councils were not a priority for an extended period of time. Uh, a lot of teachers did not understand parity in school site councils. In other words, you needed the same number of teachers, same number of parents. Wasn't necessarily being observed and that in some cases, uh, they needed the election for teachers, by teachers to identify their representatives on school site councils. As we go further, uh, condition of buildings, ironically, yes, they have improved, but if you look over at the graph, um, it indicates that uh, uh, in heating and cooling are both inadequate in about seventy-one percent of our building. That seems to have been uh, some considered, ironically, they ended up that some uh, uh, had adequate air conditioning, but not adequate heating. But in, in most cases, there were uh, individual problems. There were problems that continued to uh, plague the schools and you, you know them well. One other thing too is seventy-eight percent of the teachers indicated that there was too much uh, focus and time committed to standardized testing in our school. They don't believe that the focus on standardized testing is beneficial of, of primary uh, benefit to uh, the students that we educate. Uh, and from that, I don't know if you have any questions, but um, uh, the conditions of buildings, we've got that. It's within the survey, student learning and teachers' teaching impact uh, of the address, let's see. When we asked members if they had to do it all over again, would they choose a career in education? Fifty-two percent agreed they would, twenty-three percent were neutral and twenty-five percent disagreed or would not. I think that's telling about what it's like being educator uh, in our, in, in, in our schools, our educator across the country. Uh, and it's created some difficulties. I did get a, a text from uh, Uh, and it's created some difficulties. I did get a, a text from, uh, uh, Shelley Bovare from the LSAA, the president of LSAA, and she wanted me to inform you that they totally support the findings that we've created or we've gotten out of the survey of our members. Uh, they're consistent, I've shared this with her before. Uh, and they're consistent with what they believe is in the best interest to address, uh, the needs of our schools and the needs of our students. So, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. If not, uh, if you have other further questions you want to ask, feel free, uh, at another time.
Okay, um, if we're all unmuted, Mr. Um, Paul, I'll just go right down the line and try to keep your comments brief, uh, Ms. Clark.
Yes, uh, thank you for this information, putting it all together, and for all those that participated. Very helpful and a lot of information to, um, consume, but good. I'm just curious though, um, with the social emotional learning component and the disruptive behavior, uh, with such a high percentage saying that, um, you, there's, that's a real issue. What percentage of students in a classroom would you say, uh, is it recommended may, maybe should be placed in an alternative program? Um.
Well, it's, I think it varies from school to school and classroom to classroom, uh, Ms. Clark, I, I don't have a, you know, I, I think we get the phone calls all the time at the office when we talk with, with, with the teachers. I think in some places, uh, it, it's much more difficult than in others, just depends on the school. Uh, I think what happens is you try to send it tight as best you can. Uh, and, and bring an example, make sure there's a consistent discipline code for the students. They have to understand that they have responsibilities, uh, to deal with the education of other students, uh, in the classes, in the class. Uh, that takes time, in some cases, you get some big schools and they need additional support. Alternative classroom placement, uh, within the school may be a possibility, although we know where the type of space. But in some cases, it may be that the student needs to be brought into a different facility, a different school, so that they can get the specialized, uh, I think services that they need to come to that conclusion on their own and then be integrated back into the regular classroom.
Yeah, I did notice in the, um, Student Opportunity Act that there was a, um, a line item for increased personnel and, uh, services to support the students. And that that was about one million dollars to create some alternative, school alternative programs at nine schools. Is that correct, Dr. Boyd, um, on the last presentation we saw?
Yes, uh, we did have, uh, Paul was gracious enough to provide his data in advance of, uh, developing that plan, and it was incorporated within, so, uh, what that includes is, uh, all of our schools that are inclusive of grades five through twelve. Including enough resources for the development of within school alternative, uh, program.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dakota.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, just a comment, uh, I think relating back to, um, my earlier motion. Uh, if the school department could acquire more space, um, and, and perhaps be able to take some students out of certain building, a lot of the buildings. That, that they would suddenly have room to have a, say, an in-house suspension room or, or real discipline issues. Because discipline seems to be another issue, not just, uh, not, uh, and not, um, mental health issues, but then again, mental health issues can be contributing to disruptive behavior in the classroom. So, I think it might be something that we look into in order for us to be able to, uh, to have that kind of a facility within each of our buildings. Uh, because if you send a kid off to the, you know, to the principal's office. Um, and, and they've been disrupting your class for the, the last hour and a half, two hours. And you finally have had it and you send that, that child off to the, to the, uh, office. Uh, chances are he'll, that child will, will come back to your classroom very short order and nothing has happened, and, and I know that that's not always the case. But, and, and that's a bit broad brush painting that, but you know, that's frustrating to the classroom teacher who's, who's the one putting up with that. And it's, and for the classroom that's, that's putting up with it too, those kids want to learn. And, and the disruptive behavior really detracts that, takes that away from them.
Thank you. Mr. Dylan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, I think this is, uh, some great data. Um, I think the first thing that it probably says is that, um, we're not all on the same page. You gotta, you have to get on the same page. Um, it brings up a lot of points that I've been wanting to bring up. Uh, and discipline is, discipline's top of my list right now for a need in our public schools. Um, clear discipline policy, um, and alternative schools definitely have a function in this school system. Uh, uh, you know, I, I, I know we're moving to, you know, more and more to inclusion. I understand that, um, there's a population of kids that we serve, um, that cannot be educated in the regular classroom. And obviously, we want to get them to that point, right? Um, but, uh, they need it in a different setting. Um, and I think, you know, we need to get tough, we need to get tough on this. Need to, uh, give our administrators the ability to do that. And, um, I think that it changes the whole school building. Uh, and I think it also, uh, affects the morale of staff. Uh, because our teachers, our teachers don't have any, any discipline power right now. I think they feel that way, uh, and it, that's pretty demoralizing. Kids start to realize it. And I think, I mean, that's, it's number one, has to be number one priority for our district right now. Uh, and then facilities, resources, that's something we know, I mean, um, and they need to become a priority. I know that takes work in the city, um, and it's going to take a lot of work, but, uh, I think it brings up those two huge points, I think it brings them to the front, what we need to be talking about right now. Bravo on that, um, and, and when I see a stat fifty-two percent. I think it was only fifty-two percent, um, of teachers would choose teaching again if they were able to start over. That, that hurts. Um, and I say it often, we don't treat our staff as well as we should. I, I think that makes it pretty clear that we're, we're not there or, or where we need to be. Uh, this is good stuff, and I, I think it's bringing up a lot of discussion more on.
Thank you, Mr. Doherty.
Your Honor, just a couple of quick points, I have to say, uh, right out of the gate, um, I saw that, uh, the survey emphasized what I've been feeling all along about the lack of social emotional supports for our students and our staff, we're seeing it. And the number of students being taken out by ambulance, as my colleagues know, uh, those numbers have just been going up and up. And it certainly underscores what we also all know is that, that we have been uh, dealing with not having adequate resources for over a decade. And the last couple of years in particular have taken its toll. Um, it's happening in our schools where, uh, it's challenging work to begin with to be an educator in an urban district, a gateway city. Where many of our families, English is not their first language, the poverty, all those factors that go into the challenge. But if you're also a teacher that doesn't have the resources you need, whether it's the adequate staff, the staff with the uh, professional know-how, the social worker, psychologist, behavior specialist. It makes the job that much harder, so a couple of things that it reinforced for me, especially as we're going into um, another budget cycle, but unfortunately, I'm going to have to be a little bit more pessimistic than my colleague, Mr. Hoy, that, uh, I don't think we're going to get all this money that was promised us, I think the world has changed dramatically from this pandemic. And we still don't know how it's all going to play out, but so we might not be in a situation to start to build back those things that we need. But I want to talk specifically about the behavior, uh, in alter- alternative supports. Because I saw something different from that, uh, report, I did see that there was a really strong feeling behind uh, getting those resources for our schools, but it doesn't have to be a separate school, my, what I've seen over the years, what we've tried to do with alternative education. Um, and try to improve it, so it's not this like just holding ground where those kids are not getting the supports, and the troubled kids need supports too. That if we could build capacity within each of our schools by having adequate professional development. By having adequate base staffing, that maybe we could catch these problems for these children earlier. So that they don't get to the point that we're pulling them out of their school environment. So I think that we, I, I think it was Mr. Dylan who said, we're not on the same page. I think we do have different ideas about how to solve this. The good news is we all recognize it's an area we need to look at, just like looking at the, uh, impact of our infrastructure has on our ability to teach, if we don't have a proper heat, if we don't have proper ventilation, the impact of closing our libraries. Uh, you know, these are things, decisions that were made in really difficult times. Uh, that we need to be looking at, how do we go forward with whatever limited money we end up having? And as Ms. Martin said at the beginning of the meeting, um, we need to review these, how these decisions are being made. What the priorities are, and I think this information, um, as I said, it reinforces some things I already believe, I've already seen. And it also puts a sharp, uh, focus on the areas that we need to be thinking about, uh, to support our frontline staff. So thank you, Mr. Georges, for this work, and I think it should be certainly one of, uh, the guiding factors we use as we go forward with, uh, prioritizing what we do with the resources we do have.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Hoy.
Again, Mayor, and, uh, this basically goes out to Paul Georges, but, uh, I know you said keep it brief, Mayor, I'm going to try to, but it's not going to be easy for me.
I know, we'll try.
Al- alternative schools, something for the past, uh, quarter century I never voted for. The only time I ever voted for anything for an alternative school was a million dollar grant to help try to straighten out the Career Academy, which has been a total failure since the day it started, in my opinion. Now, Cardinal O'Connor School at one time, it was a good, uh, it was a good alternative school. But we started to get too easy on them, letting, letting these real bad guys play basketball with their school. They're over there at an alternative school, wear them away, so we, we lost our backbone and the Cardinal O'Connor fell apart. Uh, but now it is a beautiful, uh, preschool, it's awesome. Uh, now the bridge program, the only ones that should get credit for that great program is Middlesex Community College, that's how I feel. I think, uh, some people over there made that a great school, but other than that, alternative schools to me do not work. Under Dr. Kafawi not too long ago, we, uh, said to them, okay, we're going to build, the Cardinal O'Connor is going to be closed. Send back those ten of eleven students to the Sullivan, but send them back with staff that can handle them right on their property. Find a room for them and keep them in that room until they get squared away. Uh, you can fix your problems right at every school. We tried to keep fourth graders back, one at the Riley, the fourth grade, and one over at the Moody. So they didn't have to go in middle school and face vaping and all this violence. We did try that, and under another superintendent, what did we do? We pulled down everything Dr. Kafawi did. So that's what we were doing. But now, Mayor, this new administration is making moves that I feel is going to fix it forever. So again, I know I have to shorten it up, but this went out to Paul Georges about alternative schools, they don't work that well. And conditions of your schools, let me just leave you tonight. I have to look back a couple of years ago, but it all comes down to John Leahy and Bill Samaras and Rita Mercier. Dean Gendron, Bob Gignac, and myself, and we sat there in front of a city manager and told him that your schools are terrible. The maintenance is terrible, you haven't maintained them in fifty years. Other people run and take all the credit for those things, but Gignac, Gendron, and the people I sit on the city side. Yeah, we basically just opened up a can of worms, but it's the biggest can of worms we ever opened. And Mr. Georges, in my opinion, you've made it one of your biggest issues, and I'm glad you did too. But thank you for the time, Mayor, I tried to shorten it up, you would have had to gavel me normally, but thank you for the time.
You did a great job, Mr. Hoy, uh, Ms. Martin.
Um, I, I join my colleagues in, in thanking, um, Mr. Georges and, and his team and, and all the teachers and sharing this information. Uh, I'm sure like many of my colleagues, it, it wasn't surprising, you know, they, these are all issues that we've talked about for a very long time. Um, I, I just would, would counsel that, um, you know, again, as a, as a district, and I, I know I'm not saying this, uh, I'm not saying anything that Mr. Georges and, and his entire team know. You know, we're not in the discipline business, that, that's not the business we're in, we're in the education. Um, I know that our union and I know their leadership are all very well aware of. Um, but I, I just think that any decisions we're making in terms of, um, you know, uh, whether it's alternative schooling or having breakout rooms within school locations or investments that we're making in social work, um, expertise and, and psychologists and, and all those uh, wraparound services that our students need, they're all driven by our ultimate goal of being able to educate students and, and their families. Um, so I, I just, you know, as we, as we have these conversations, uh, and I'm certainly looking forward to it. That we can talk about what kind of investments we can make in this area. Um, you know, it's, I, I, I look forward to the chance to talk about how we bring the resources to the students and to the families that will help them be successful. Um, and be able to, to build a system that will serve those, those students and those families. Um, in a, in a stronger way. Uh, recognizing that, you know, to Ms. Doherty's point, a child who's being taken to by ambulance because of a mental health issue, that's not a discipline issue. Um, so understanding that, that really there are, are very, um, critical issues that are being faced by children and families. And that we need to provide our teachers and all of our school personnel with the tools and the adequate support so that they can, they can help those kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Um, we do have a registered speaker, um, is, uh, Laurie McCafee, ready to speak?
I'm here, can you hear me?
Sure.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to speak, I, for most of you that don't know me, I am a speech language pathologist, I work in the city, I've been here for about nineteen years. Um, I'm here to talk about the survey's results and the need for additional, uh, speech pathologists to be hired. Just a little background history for new people that, um, for Dr. Boyd, I don't know if Mr. Lovato is here, is he here tonight?
No.
No, um, just, we, last year, on, on, I think, three or four early release days, we, um, sat together and did extensive work. Uh, to obtain our workload data, uh, and last year, Jen McChrystal, our previous special ed director, and Donna Maluccio stood in front of the previous school committee, asking, uh, for two more speech pathologists. At the time, um, funds were not available, and notes indicate that it would be considered in the future if the budget allowed. So this time, since this time, our situation really hasn't improved. Um, we added just another, uh, classroom with students with autism at the Ri- at the Riley this year. And we're just, every year, we're just expected to absorb and absorb all of these kids, um. When you look at a child with autism, their main, main need is communication. And we're not able to provide the services that we need to for these children. Um, when you look at the IEPs, the parent vision statement will always state, I want my child to, to be able to speak more, to communicate better with their friends, with their peers, with teachers. Um, it's always their primary concern. When I was hired nineteen years ago, Lowell had five, I think it was five, we're, we're trying to recollect from our notes. Five classrooms with students with autism, they were very small. Today, we have forty-five classrooms, students with autism, forty-five, um, and most of those are full. So for the past nineteen years, we've added three new speech pathologists and five speech assistants. We are grateful for those, however, if you do a little math, there's been an eight hundred percent increase in CSA classrooms. Those are classrooms with students with autism, eight hundred percent increase, and there's only been a twenty-nine percent increase in speech staff. That to me is just shocking. Um, and I, I'm speaking a lot about the CSA classes, but we also service the LEAP classes, the language-based classrooms. And I digress to talk about when you were all discussing behavior. Um, most discipline issues are caused by a child with a learning disability that's not addressed. It's much cooler to be a punk and get kicked out of class than to admit you can't read or you don't understand what the teacher's saying. Um, so, not long ago, the Cardinal School was added. Um, but we just, when, when it was opened, there was not a full-time speech pathologist added. There are over fifty kids right now that require speech services there. At the time, Jen McChrystal told us, we need to work as a team and figure out who's going over there to, to service these kids. Two speech pathologists, um, I know they're on here tonight, two, um, volunteered to lead their buildings during the week to provide some of the services. We also, in December, got a speech assistant to go over a couple other dates. It's honestly a Band-Aid, and it's not a long-term situation, um, solution, excuse me. So, groupings for our therapy are getting larger, we're ineffective, large workloads have a negative effect. Um, therapies missed due to testing and meetings. Large workloads have a negative effect. Therapies missed due to testing and meetings. If you ask any teacher, it's just become the norm that we have to do it to attend the meetings. One solution from our administration was to decrease our workload by not attending any meeting. I don't feel this is best practice, and as a parent, I would be a little insulted if I went to an IP meeting and the people that were working with my child didn't attend. So, I don't think that's not a solution. I'm also the mentor for all the new speech pathologists entering the city. And throughout the years, we've lost numerous well-skilled speech pathologists due to all of these working conditions. Just this year, we lost an amazing young speech pathologist at the eighty-day school. She felt defeated. She had limited job satisfaction, and I couldn't blame, I, I can't blame her. Our turnover rate for such a small group is very high, and our positions are hard to fill. It took over four months for this position to be filled at face. So, those kids did not receive service. The speech pathologists, as a group, were able to sit with Dr. Boyd last August, and we made him aware of all these concerns, talked about our own ethics and challenged every week we serviced, when our services were missed. And we've been discussing this ongoing with Mr. Lovato, too. Let's see. I'm gonna be frank. It's really discouraging to hear that so many new positions have been created downtown, and no one's talking about hiring new speech pathologists. Our principals, our, our backbone, they know our daily struggles. Most stand behind us. So, today, I am asking you, the school committee, for our voices to be heard. We're a small group. There's only about twenty-four of us, but we're screaming for help. We're pleading with you to add additional speech pathologists, especially for the Cardinal. It's a full-time position, fifty students, and those are preschoolers. If we provide the early intervention that they need, they won't need us years from now. We keep kids on our caseload because we're not effective right now with what we're doing. So, we just, we need more staff. Please, please. Thank you. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your comments, and they have been worth it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any, any, I shouldn't ask, but any further follow-up, Mr. Georges?
I.
Take a brief statement. Are you all set?
I would just, just a couple of things. One thing that I had missed in, in the presentation, I just missed a sheet. It has to do with determining where our professional development is determined. And one of the strongest, strongest voice for this is the vast majority of teachers said that professional development for teachers should be determined by the teachers at the school level. The second most popular answer was collaborative decision-making within the school. And the third was what school administrators believe is important in their school. The least one, the one that was least important was district initiatives. So, I think those decisions are better made at the school because they better understand what the needs are. And the second issue was something with Mr. Dillon that had, and I appreciate letting be able to answer that. It had to do with, Mr. Dillon was, was somewhat surprised, and, and I think probably a little bit unhappy about the, the, you know, talking about fifty-two percent of the, of the teachers showed relative, let's say, content and, contentness with, with their situation. But eighty-four percent said that if the things that they're concerned about were addressed, they would feel much better about the job that they're doing. I think a lot of teachers have a lot of frustration, and living with a lot of frustration is the end result of, maybe in, in some cases, bad decisions, but also a lack of resources available to support the teachers doing what they're doing. Every teacher right now wants to do a heck of a job and improve the future of every child out there. Empower them to do it by giving them the tools that they need. That's all I can finish, and, and finish. And, and thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Sure, Mr. Howie.
Thanks again, Mayor. I just wanna say something about Ms. Keith that just spoke a little while ago.
Ms. McCarthy, you mean?
Ms. McCarthy. I look, I, I know her as Laurie Keith. I'm sorry.
Okay.
But I know she was best friends recently with Bill Rizzo, that passed away young. And he gave me a ton of information on Latin Lyceum, and I, it helped me help my granddaughter get through it. And I did fight a lot because of his information. My motion earlier tonight about special education was kind of addressed for, for Ms. Keith. I'm gonna keep calling her Keith because I, I have to get information from people like herself and Megan, her other friend, and all of these people. And when I heard their message, I've been fighting for, or at least bringing up speech pathologists for maybe a couple of years now because I knew we were losing them. But I also sat at many at desks with kids being taught by these people. And I'm telling you, unless you go sit down with four kids that need a speech pathologist and see what they do to a child, it's an incredible job, and we are losing them. I don't think we pay them enough, and that's another time we'll talk about that. But I wanna thank her for coming forward to speak tonight. I'm shocked that she didn't end up crying because she almost had me crying over here. Thanks again. And that, those are the people we have to listen to, period. They know the job, and it is staff shortage. It's, it's everywhere. When I worked in the prison and they cut all mental health, what happened to prisons? Look at them. If you haven't seen the news, they're falling apart. The same thing in the school system. You made it so inclusive that they need a ton of money to pull it off. It's a staff shortage. That's all it is. Thank you for the extra time, Mayor. I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Superintendent, nine-three.
Thank you. Before we proceed, I just wanna thank Mr. Georges, Ms. McCarthy. It was a very informative meeting, Ms. McCarthy and Mr. Georges. That data certainly has been incorporated in our strategic planning process. It's also been nice through the first half of this meeting to be back in the job I had for the past eight months. That job has changed entirely over the last few weeks. My job as superintendent looked no more like the job I had in September. The world has changed. All of our roles have changed. I wanna, before we enter, thank Mr. Georges for his partnership and thank all of our teachers and all of our staff for moving into this new world so seamlessly compared to what it could have been because of their hard work, their effort to make sure that we can support, connect our kids, starting with really thinking about their well-being and their safety. Today, we delivered forty-five hundred meals to young people, one day. We distributed laptops across nearly one hundred students. We're continuing. We're gonna be ramping up that effort going forward. My day today was spent entirely outdoors, as was the very limited number of staff that are working onsite to connect with our kids and our young people. Onsite, outdoors, connecting at six foot, as close as I could come to a kid, six feet. To me, that's a sad state of affairs as superintendent, but it is the world we're in right now. So, that's an intro into, Ms. Phillips is gonna share with you our current presentation on the Corona virus response. You will notice, however, that this is moving so rapidly, that there are some things within this presentation that were uploaded on Friday that are now a little bit antiquated. So, we're gonna adjust, and please do ask questions as we go. And we know first that our first and our foremost attention has to be on the safety and well-being of our young people. But as Ms. Martin alluded to, there's gonna be a ripple effect on the economy as we're already starting to see. That's the, gonna be number two, and close, close with that is going to be the academic impact that we just simply cannot take the place of the daily interaction that a teacher can have with a child. We're working really hard to make the best of this circumstance right now, and we will ensure that our kids get the best environment that we can create. But school committee, we cannot sugarcoat it in any way to say that it is going to replicate the daily interaction that a child can have with their teacher. This is not going to be a close second. It's gonna be a distant second in what we can create. You did approve that permission to enter earlier, which Committee Member Dillon did highlight, and we're gonna continue to move forward there. But Ms. Phillips, if you can take the, the, through this presentation. Mr. Mayor, I do think, given the relevance of this presentation to everyone's immediate needs, I think we should move through the, forward through this presentation and then answer questions. But I'm, I'm open to having everybody review it in their, on their desktop. It's up to you, Mr. Mayor. How would you like to proceed?
It's up on the screen now. Do you want to just go through as you speak?
That would be our recommendation.
Why don't we do that?
All right. Thank you. Ms. Phillips?
Dr. Boyd, I also wanna start by expressing gratitude to everyone working together through these difficult times. Not only our staff interfacing with the public, but a lot of our staff behind the scenes who are working to make sure that we continue to provide support to our families, families and students, as well as our community partners. So, to give you a recap of how did we get here, so the local public schools has been monitoring this pandemic since the beginning of March. It started with us working with the Department of Health, with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, our local health department, to understand how we should be responding, responding to this virus. We took early steps to make sure that our schools were disinfected while students were still in school after hours. We were using fogging and sprayer machines to disinfect our schools, sharing information around hand washing, sneezing, really taking these early efforts to combat the spread of COVID-19 virus. And, and then we came to the decision that it was best to close schools on Monday, March fourth. I'm sorry, on Monday, March sixteenth. Again, this was a preventative effort. A couple of days later, Governor Baker announced all schools would be closed for three weeks, an additional week than we had initially anticipated. And then, on the twenty-fifth, Governor Baker extended the statewide closure until May fourth. And so, prior to closure, we had announced the canceling of all out-of-state domestic school-related activities, international activities, really wanting to make sure that we were doing everything that we could with the information that we had to keep our, our students and schools and staff safe. So, since then, we've been really trying to strengthen our communication efforts, both our traditional communication efforts as well as utilizing our, our new communication, our social media, and then also exploring some, some new and out-of-the-box ways of communicating with families, especially our linguistically diverse families. So, we have been utilizing our Connect Ed system. That is our recorded phone call system for getting messages out to the entire population. Every message that goes out in English also follows with a message in Spanish, Portuguese, Kamai, or Swahili. That's based on the language that the family indicated they wanted to be communicated with at the time of registration. And so, I wanted to make sure everyone knew that because some families had inquired whether we were doing our best to communicate with, with our diverse families, our linguistically diverse families, and the answer is yes. All of our emails as well have gone out in multiple languages, trying to increase communication to families. In, in an effort to increase two-way communication, we have been logging phone calls in our Family Resource Center, which remains open for remote services to families and also available by appointment for services such as working permits, or we're still responding to families who have been identified in need of, of services for experiencing homelessness. So, really appreciative that, that we're able to continue providing these services for our families. We also have an online form that families have started using since Friday to communicate with us about their needs. Our website, we built a COVID-19 information page. It's updated with the latest information across the district, and it includes information about our grab-and-go meal service. I, we are working right now to increase the understanding and visibility of our translate function. So, our website can be translated into multiple languages, and this includes the documents that are uploaded. Not all of the documents, but, but many of the documents. I'm also thankful, I wanna acknowledge the Citywide Family Council for putting out some resources for families, a video for how they, how our families can access the translate button, as well as our home learning page as well. Social media, we've increased our presence and our followers on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. Another traditional method is emails to staff, and as I mentioned, we are translating all of our messages in multiple languages. We continue to use our language line to families who speak languages other than Spanish, Portuguese, Kamai, and Swahili. And we know that there are families of, of many languages in our district. We are still serving families using the language line and using our trained translators and interpreters. We're working to contact our families and hear from them around how are they receiving our information and how can we, you know, connect them to, to our Facebook page if they're not already following us or to providing, providing us with an email. At registration, we take phone numbers for families, but we don't always, you know, it, it's up to the families whether they wanna share their email address. And we're now learning the importance of, of having multiple ways of communicating with our families. And when we make the calls to them, we try to connect them to as many ways as possible to receive information from us. Our bilingual family liaisons are initiating phone calls to newcomer families. Again, some families just joined our district a couple of weeks ago, and it is important to make that connection with them, to let them know about the meal service, especially with the meal service being centralized. It may not be at their homeschool, but it is available for them if they can get to one of our distribution sites. And, and then we're also creating a community communication list serve. So, we recognize that there are many ways to get information to our families, and some of our community partners have expressed, you know, a desire to share out this information as well with their, with their community members, our faith-based partners, our nonprofit partners. So, we are creating that list serve so that the information that's getting to families are also getting to our community leaders to share the information. We continue to provide our meal service. We started with lunches and we've extended into breakfast. So, now, anyone can come and pick up the lunch for the day as well as a breakfast for the next morning. Students aren't required to be present, and you can pick up more, you know, for yourself as well as for your neighbor or, you know, well, your child or a neighbor's child. We have nine different sites where we are serving meals for students ages two to eighteen. And I'll move on to at-home learning. We've launched the at-home learning section on our website with optional enrichment activities to support learning at, at each grade level. We also created a one-pager, which we distributed at our, at our lunch sites, letting families know what was available, how to access the site. And again, I wanna acknowledge the Citywide Family Committee for, for also creating some communications around how families can, can access this page easily. We've also created packets, take-home packets, which we send home on Wednesdays and Thursdays. Today, we distributed our third week of packets. We've been running out every, every time, every Wednesday, we've been running out and having to print more. I think we're at about twenty-five hundred to three thousand packets, again, distributed on Wednesday and Thursday. And then, we've also started distributing our social emotional learning and mental health resource packet so that families can know how to access some of the community resources. We know this is a stressful time, and, and our staff worked with our community partners to make sure that we were giving accurate information to families about how they could access some of the mental health resources during this difficult time. And then, most recently, on March twenty-sixth, the governor and the commissioner released guidance on remote learning. And they, they set the expectation that districts and schools would work to adopt a remote learning model, recognizing that nothing can replace the in-person schooling experience. But nonetheless, we wanted to make sure that, that learning continued for our students. By the time our students are anticipated to return back to school, we'll have been out of school for almost seven weeks. I think seven weeks. That is a tremendous period of time, and we wanna make sure that we're not creating gaps in learning during this time. This is an area that is, that is evolving. And today, we distributed Chromebooks, I believe, to our high school students. So I believe that last week, a survey was implemented to our students to see who had access to technological devices, which students had access to internet. And based on that survey, the school then made follow-ups to students to come up with a plan to get those devices into students' hands. So today was the first day of the distribution of those, you know, of the devices. I believe it's going to continue tomorrow. And then we will be releasing a plan for what parents can expect for the next couple of weeks for at-home learning. So we're also, I want to acknowledge our virtual Read Aloud and our YouTube page. These feature videos from teachers, staff, principals. Dr. Boyd uploaded a video for Autism Awareness Day for tomorrow. So our families can go on and see their teachers and educators reading books. And in the take-home resource packets, we also have activities to help parents to support students with comprehension and questioning at home related to some of the the Read Aloud books that they're listening to together. And then some of our schools are posting virtual spirit days. They're just trying to keep the morale up, trying to keep everyone connected to school. And they're posting spirit days like pajama day or hat day, just to continue that community feeling and that feeling of support during this time. So as we have been responding to at-home learning and the impacts of the virus closing our schools, we have continued the business of planning forward. And I want to share that our school site councils have continued their meetings via Zoom. Prior to school closure, we did hold a centralized training. All of our schools participated with approximately 150 school site council members coming together to hear information together around the expectation of the committee, the school budgeting process. They were able to receive the budget that was allocated to their school and ask questions and then move into the decision-making process at their individual schools. A school site council section, it has been created for each school's website where their members should be posted, their agendas, as well as the minutes for all of their meetings. And we've also created a section on our district website, which we'll be making live, which will house all of the upcoming agendas as we move forward with strengthening the school site council process. And so our principals are preparing to present and have started presenting their budgets to a central office team for review and collaboration. This process is anticipated to be completed by mid-April. And then budgets will be collectively presented to the school committee in May. And then just kind of wrapping up, I wanted to share that our Central Office and Family Resource Center, although we are working remotely, we are still answering questions and taking phone calls from the public. So the public can call our central office line or our family resource line, and they will get a response to any questions that they may have. Or, you know, we're happy to connect them with any resources to help with translation needs as requested. And then just wanted to highlight that there are two areas that were delayed, our registration process as well as our knowledgeable. Typically, we start our registration in March, but it's scheduled to start on March 30th. They will be delayed, it will depend on, you know, how things evolve with the pandemic. But we will let families know when we're able to register families in person again. And then, as well as our knowledgeable, I know we had reached the finals and everyone was eagerly awaiting that, but that had to be postponed and we will announce when that event can take place.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Phillips and School Committee. Thank you for your flexibility and support as we navigate these uncharted waters. I want to really reiterate what I said at the beginning and a real thank you to all of our staff. Everyone's jobs have changed immensely. Everybody is proceeding with the job that is vastly different than the job that they were trained for, the job that they have held, the job that they had desired to move forward in because this world has changed around us. As I talk with our staff and as I talk with our team, we are operating under three principles. That's principles, P-L-E-S. And those three principles are this: communication, making sure that we can communicate up-to-date information, get information out to families using every vehicle, every mode of communication that we can; two, collaboration, working with community partners, working with one another, collaborating across the board to make sure that we can support one another and support our young people; and then three, compassion, showing compassion for our families, compassion for our staff, compassion for our entire community, working to make sure that we can support our neighbors, our community members who are most vulnerable and most in need. And we feel that if we can move forward in that direction and together as one community, we can move forward through this, we will get through this, and we will get through this stronger than we were to begin. And we will get through this on the other side as we have before, as one Lowell. Thank you, teachers, thank you, staff members, thank you, community. We may not be perfect each and every day, but we are, I am confident, doing the best we can and doing the best we can to prioritize the needs of our young people. I couldn't be more proud to be a member of the Lowell Public School team. And during these tough times is really when you see a team come together. And this team, all nearly 3,000 employees that make up Lowell Public Schools has come together, I believe, like no other. And thank you to everyone for that and thank you, committee, for being our governing and guiding force in these days ahead.
Thank you. I'm going to open it up to Ms. Martin and go back the other way. So Ms. Martin, any comments?
I do have a few questions, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor. My first question was regarding the packets that are being distributed. So can I ask just for a little deeper discussion of what those packets are? I'm assuming they're not worksheets that they're, you know, offering online resources? You know, I'm just trying to get a sense of what a typical packet would look like, what it would include.
Sure, Ms. Desmond.
Yes, so there's a couple of things that we've done in the curriculum office. First, we have online resources set up on our website based on grade level. So if you were to go to our website and you clicked on any grade level, you would have access to Clever, which is our online source that our students use on a regular basis. So if you were a elementary child, you would log on to Clever in your classroom regularly. So our students know how to do this. So that is accessible by every grade in our website so that they can access their online resources. That would be iReady, ST Math, Lexia, all of those normal resources that they use on a regular basis. Then above and beyond that, every grade level has subject matter activities that are online. So you can go online and get a month's worth of ELA activities where you have a suggested list of books along with pictures of those covers so that families know exactly what those books look like as well as the title. And then very rich activities around writing and also comprehension. Then we have math activities, we have science and social studies activities, social emotional. We have physical education calendars, so if you wanted for the month, the March, that activity for your child to do every day physically, we have those there as well. The packets are a little different. It is a combination of website activities and also written activities in the form of various worksheets that align with our standards. So if you were going on to iReady through Clever, we also have the iReady paper activities that would go along with those online activities. So we have lots of families that are coming and picking up the paper packets to complement a lot of the online activities that they're doing. We also have families that don't have access to the online, so we wanted to make sure that they had access to the packets. The literacy packets are exactly like the online activities. There's writing activities that you can partake in as well as comprehensive activities. You would have to self-select a book, though. So if you didn't want to use the books that we offer online, and we offer all kinds of online Read Alouds and books, but if you didn't want to do that, if you wanted to pick from something at home or something that you could access through some other library, those activities are there. So they're not, it's not a worksheet, it's directed activities. The worksheets are more in the area of mathematics, but again, they're based on iReady activities. Science and social studies are more project-based activities that are built into the packets. Scavenger hunts and various other activities, and they're all based on the grade level. Last week, our packets ran out pretty quickly for kindergarten and third grade. So this week, we made sure that we made many, many more packets. I did hear that some sites ran out again today. So the demand for the worksheet packets are pretty great. The other thing is that all the packets have been put into PDF format and are on our website as well. So if someone wanted to download the packets at home, they can do that as well. So we have lots of different at-home learning experiences available on our website. Again, it's based on grade level. And we then also have a special education presentation that has lots of activities available for students that have communication needs as well as social stories. So there's a varying amount of activities on our website. I hope that answers the question.
It does, and that's really, that's great. I mean, I think having that kind of depth of resources available across the district is really wonderful.
And I do want to point out that we have teachers and administrators actually recording themselves doing Read Alouds as well in our bank is up to, I think, 140. So if someone wanted to access a Read Aloud versus reading a story themselves, they could do that as well.
Thank you. So what I would say is kind of the next step in this, in making all these resources effective and ensuring that families and parents have the ability to really make the most of them for their students, is kind of the direction aspect of it. Even just listening to your list, that's overwhelming. Kind of all the different resources that are being provided and kind of in all the different subject areas. Is there, in our next kind of, you know, obviously we're now extended into May, is there an opportunity for us to provide some kind of structure for parents to be able to use these resources, you know, in a more thoughtful and deliberate way?
Yeah, we're currently working through with our union partners to provide even more guidance and structure and guidance to teachers, and we're collaborating around those expectations now. Those will be forthcoming in the not-too-distant future as well. We also have uploaded a schedule, kind of a mock schedule that parents might want to consider to follow, schedule of the day to provide some structure to the day. And the packets are provided as they are in PDF form at a week chunk. So here's the activities for one week, here's the standard, here's a structure you might want to use within your day. And we then provide that out each week. That's the standard structure we've been providing and we're certainly working to provide even greater clarity there. I will tell you, and again, a big thank you to all of our many teachers. They're finding new and different ways to reach out, connect with kids, knowing that those traditional ways just are not there for them. And as teachers are connecting with kids, they're providing that additional guidance as well. But thank you, Ms. Martin, you're right, greater specificity is the direction that we're working towards.
And I do, can I just mention that on every grade level link, there is a schedule of recommended times for each age group. So if you're kindergarten, obviously the amount of time you're spending on literacy or math is significantly reduced from if you were a child in eighth grade. So those are all custom at every grade level link.
Well, I think that's, I think that's great. And I think moving forward, I mean, it will come down to the expertise of our teachers and administrators and ensuring that all these great resources get used effectively and well. So I think that's exactly the direction we need to be moving in, so that's wonderful news. To shift a little bit to the discussions on the budget. I know, so, and I don't, I'm not sure who will answer this, but so we had 150 members of school site councils who were trained prior to the, you know, the world-changing, is that accurate?
They were provided the centralized training that were then supplemented at the, at school sites and support provided by principals directly to their individual school site councils, so the 150.
How many of those 150 people were parents and how many were representing staff?
Ms. Phillips?
Can you hear me? Okay, so we did ask all of our schools to bring, to ensure that their team was balanced. They didn't have to bring their full team, but they did need to at least have parents, teachers, and the administrator present. I do believe that parents were represented for each of our schools. We did have a sign-in sheet that I can double-check, but I do recall there being parents in addition to teachers and community and the administrator.
And if I could, even, we had two students come from Lowell High School that participated in the training. So we even had student representation at the high school level.
That's great.
Great to see.
My final question from the report really is around the registration. I know, I mean, you know, obviously our original plan for preschool and whatnot, registration kind of went out the window. And I'm sure you're still kind of trying to figure out how to make that happen. I mean, if we wait until May or June, I mean, it really feels to me like that would be too late. Do we have any opportunity, any plans to maybe be able to do this in a more virtual way? I know for a lot of programs and a lot of, you know, services across the city, we're developing ways to do, you know, no-contact registration, being able to use, you know, photos and scanned copies of documentation to, you know, to get all the backup that you need. Is there any opportunity for us to be able to do that through the Family Information Center?
Yeah, yes, thanks, Ms. Martin. You're going to be seeing that, we expect that to come to you as a PTE during your next meeting. We received those quotes. Ms. Phillips and her team have been exploring that and are ready to bring forward, we believe, at the next meeting for school committee consideration. You also should expect there's going to be some related policy adjustments that we need to consider. We may consider either one of two options there as we bring these things to you. The school committee on the books right now can suspend any one policy. You could simply suspend the policy or we can craft a brand-new policy. We'll be bringing those recommendations to you as well. Again, moving as quickly as possible, and I want to thank the committee and also to the community. This committee has come together for special sessions, there may very well need to be a special session. The committee's calendar will be flexible to the needs of the community. And these are the types of things that we may actually have a special session for. As soon as it's ready, I'll be working with Mayor Leahy to make sure we can get it on the board's docket.
Perfect. My one last question, and you may not want to, this may be something for another day also, Dr. Boyd. But I was curious about the Miramac Valley Superintendent's Association and our lack of representation on it. I know that because they're working collectively around some of the, you know, school issues and whatnot, that there could be some additional resources maybe available.
No, I'm a member there. We made a strategic choice, yeah, we're there, we're represented there, I'm on each call that we do. We get all of the information there, all of our administrators work with their counterparts across the Miramac Valley. I think what you may be referring to is sometimes they point out joint letters, if you notice from Ms. Phillips' presentation. In order to try to consolidate message and target messaging in for our families, we've been sending out Lowell-specific information. So we have received some feedback from community members that receiving information... Uh, so we have received some feedback from community members that receiving information from the state, the city, the district, it's all getting to be a bit much to navigate. So we made a strategic decision there not to add one more communication on to our community, instead to make sure that we've got Lowell-specific uh communication, but we are represented within that group and all of those conversations, uh, uh, the relevant staff member is a part of.
An interesting choice, okay. Thank you, Ms. Mary.
Okay, thank you, just, so, I don't know, on the newsletters, maybe they're not putting our name, uh, Mr. Superintendent, so just make sure they list us.
We can, we can do that, I mean, we can certainly do that.
All right, somebody, somebody sent an article and we weren't listed on there, so that's why people are assuming we're not on that, so. Um, Mr. Hoy?
So, uh, Ms. Phillips, if you're still there, I have a few questions. One would be, uh, when you, um, if the people call, like lottery that, uh, you know, have a lottery for the preschool, so if they called the direct number nine, seven, eight, six, seven, four, four, three, two, one, there's going to be someone there, or someone will return their call at that number right there, is that the most important number for them? For the family?
Yes.
Okay, uh, number two, have you noticed if citywide parent council has grown in numbers at all, because you've mentioned them twice, and I'm just curious if people are starting to get back into that?
So I'm not aware of the numbers, but um, but I have been in contact with the leadership team, appreciative of, of um the work that they've picked up to help support communication. So I, I can't speak to the members, but I can speak to, um, you know, their, their impact on, um, you know, our families during this time.
Okay, and the last thing I want to say is, I heard the superintendent say forty-five, hundred meals today. Uh, if everything's still going away, I hope it's going, they can come in and get uh themselves a lunch and then get grab on that same day a breakfast for the following day, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And I just want to touch with the Boys Club and the Girls Club. I don't know who's running that Boys Club, but uh I'm getting a lot of calls about someone doing great work there, that people can even go there, to those two places and get dinner.
Joe Hungler, he's been a great partner, he, he does re, uh, I think does, does offer an opportunity for a shout-out, yes, Boys and Girls Club is Joe Hungler.
Joe, could you tell me their last name one more time?
Hungler, H-U-N-G-L-E-R. Joe's probably watching or one of his uh staff members, that's three shout-outs right there for him.
If we're digging out three males for people, to me, that's the impressive, so, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Doherty.
Uh, first of all, I'd like to say thank you for this report, I thought it was uh very encouraging to hear uh that the school-side councils are now up and running and on each of our school websites as well as the district site, where, you know, this is really where we needed to be years ago, so I appreciate those efforts. I'd like to really focus on the um at-home learning piece, because I think uh given where we are today, this is critical for our families and our students. Uh, we are not a, a rich community, I don't have to tell you all that, we don't have, many of our families do not have a separate room with a desk and a laptop computer or a device for each child, they're sharing if they even have it. Uh, so I think that um as we move forward to think very much about what are our expectations, uh, not only for our uh students, but also for our staff, what are we expecting? I think many of our teachers are working hard already, reaching out to their families through text or whatever means they can, um, but they're also looking for direction from us, and I think that's where, as Dr. Boyd mentioned, the collaboration with our team is so important, um, that we need to uh work very closely with our unions and come up with a plan that everybody's comfortable with. I would say, uh, I think the guidelines from DESI are a good starting point and minimum of three hours of educational um opportunity every day for our students. Um, what that looks like for our staff can have flexibility, because our staff, just like our families and many of us, are in different situations. We've got, you know, we're either working from home, or we're not working at all, or we've got parents we're worried about, or families we're with illness that we're worried about, so I think we need to have some flexibility, but I'm looking for, you know, clear expectations, and some of the things that have been in my mind that I wanted to share is, I think with the younger students, the, the first graders, the second graders, they're excited to do this work and, uh, but the middle school students, what's their incentive? If we don't have built into the expectations that teachers are going to be checking off work that's done or looking at it, um, how do we motivate our kids to be incentivized to do the work, our middle school students? Um, I know our high school students are in a completely different, especially if you're a senior looking at uh graduation and trying to get into college. So um with all that, I just would have a question, and I don't know if it would be better uh for Dr. Boyd to answer or, or Mr. Hall, uh, regarding the uh actual, how many bargaining meetings have we had to discuss these details with our UTL leadership team? Um, i- is there one scheduled in, in the future, what, what efforts have been, we made to get on the same page um with our staff around collaborating to make this the best possible experience we can, given what the situation is?
Yes, I, I, so Committee Member Doherty, I want to make sure that I respect uh the confidentiality in negotiations, we don't negotiate in public, uh, uh, and I want to make sure we can respect that, we have been collaborating with all of our uh union partners. Uh, Mr. Hall, is there anything you can add while still respecting the confines of negotiations?
E- excuse me, Dr. Boyd, I'm not sure that you understand my question, I'm not asking you to go into details of negotiation, I just want to know how many meetings have been held, is there one upcoming? You know, are we actually, what, what are the dates that we've done that or that we're planning to have those sit down?
Mr. Hall?
Uh, sure, Ms. Doherty, we've um obviously, or not obviously, we haven't met in person, but we've been having extensive um phone conferences, I would say, every day for the last uh two weeks, there have been um numerous versions um passed back and forth, and there's another session uh scheduled tomorrow. Uh, we had some um back and forth today for approximately um three or four hours right before this meeting.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Doherty, for the clarification.
You're all set?
I'm good.
Okay, Mr. Dillon?
Little trouble with the mute, sorry, Mr. Mayor, uh. Are we all speaking, or is this just my turn?
We're going right down the line, so.
Oh, yeah, sure, 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 yeah, I'm, Joel, I think the only thing um that would be great for parents would just be content, like, updates on when the state comes in with any type of decision-making on standards and that type of stuff, I think, big, and we don't know, you know, obviously, there's a lot of questions still going on with this stuff, but as far as kids moving on to the next grade and graduation and all that, anytime that stuff's updated, um, keeping that part of the discussion is always a good thing.
Yeah, we'll definitely do so.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Dakota?
Um, I don't know, Ms. Martin took over two of my questions, so she had so many questions to ask. Um, but I, I have one left. Um, do we have an actual number of, of how many Chromebooks are be, are available for distribution, or is that a, is that a secret number?
No, it's not a secret number, if we centralize all of our school-based inventory, uh, we don't only count Chromebooks, it's all mobile devices. Uh, we currently inventory approximately eight thousand devices across the district, we have to do a secondary inventory to determine how many of those devices can be actually uh passed out for remote access outside of school, even though there may be mobile. Uh, Ms. Desmond and her team are actually working through that right now. We are starting with distribution with Chromebooks first, they're the, the optimal one to pass out, but as needed, and what we're seeing right now, that would, you can see, would be, we can meet approximately a bit more than fifty percent of our total student body if the need was there. Our current assessment right now is that it's not actually a fifty percent need across, it di, it varies depending on school, which is the need for us to centralize that inventory rather than doing a school-based inventory. Uh, we believe right now that with our current inventory, we can meet the full need of any student who has an access challenge. We also do uh our planning, if the need occurs, to bring it back to the school committee for additional purchase if that need is there. Uh, but we're going to currently work through our current inventory, you may have seen other school districts have chosen the reverse course, purchased new devices, moved through new devices out to families, and uh have maintained their current inventory in schools. We, we believe in, it's in Lowell's best interest for us to distribute current uh inventory, centralizing our current inventory, and then adding and supplementing that if the need occurs. Uh, but currently, right now, based on current survey, which includes our high school students, uh, we're not believing that if we scale that across the district, that there's going to be, uh, that we're going to exceed our current inventory, but I want to caution the committee, because it may come to you for purchase, the current inventory is based on mobile devices that are accessible within a school environment. Our current technology team, again, their jobs have changed, how they support devices remotely is vastly different than how we support devices within a school environment. Uh, so as we hand them out, as we distribute them, our technology team is keeping pace to make sure we're distributing devices that will work in an at-home environment as well. Uh, Ms. Desmond, if you have anything else to add to that, I know you've been working really hard on this for a, a long period of time, it feels like.
Thank you, uh, so we have been, uh, we just, we're working on distribution at the high school, uh, which will be complete tomorrow. We surveyed students, and then we personally followed up with phone calls to get an accurate read on who did not have a device and who needed one, and so we had a really great distribution today. Uh, we started very early this morning and went through five-thirty PM, um, and we will uh continue that work tomorrow, it's an appointment uh process, and again, um, thank you to the Lowell High staff that all worked together to call all of the students and verify their needs and how we meet them. Um, we will start moving into middle schools, we've started surveying some middle schools, um, where, the, the issue is that there is a lot of work that has to go into getting the devices ready so that they can access networks at home. Uh, so we do have a smaller IT team, and so we have, you know, we had to distribute today, I was there, um, we had to distribute with some of our IT teams, so only other members of the team could be accessible to go to some of the middle schools to start getting that equipment up and ready. So uh it is, it is a, a large endeavor, but again, we're personally calling families to find out exactly what the needs are, so that we can meet them.
I do have a follow-up on, on that, um, is, I've been hearing that various uh internet providers are offering free internet, has, has that been happening uh across the board here for the city?
Yes, so there's hotspots all over the city that have been opened up, and so that's part of the conversation when we um call, um, as, so one of the questions on the surveys, do you have accessibility? Uh, and so part of that conversation with families when we call is, you know, if you don't have accessibility, here is the hotspots that are available around the city that you can connect to for free. We also provided the Comcast information, Comcast is offering free internet for, I believe it's um two months, uh, it may change, because as things are changing, you know, uh, with this situation, companies are really coming forward and offering to support our, our students. Uh, so, you know, as we get that information, we do disseminate it to the families that have that need.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, um, before we get to uh Ms. Clark, can you explain the hotspots?
Sure, so there's various locations around the city that um you can connect to uh for free, they're not locked, uh, and so um we have maps that we've downloaded from the um Comcast.
You have to leave your house?
No, no, you do not have to leave your house.
Leave your house and you can connect to a hotspot?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, that clears it up, thank you. Um, Ms. Clark?
Thank you, I just want to say uh thank you, Dr. Boyd and Ms. Phillips, and um Ms. Desmond and Mr. Gilroy, and your teams too, um, for all the work that you've done, uh, the communications, I'm a recipient as a parent, I've been receiving the communications, and I have to say they are clear and concise, as, as clear as they can be, um, I think during this ever-changing time, and I appreciate that, while I know that some folks were concerned that it was not, uh, the Lowell Public Schools are not listed on the Merrimack Superintendent Council uh notice, I do think that the communication that actually came, is coming from uh our public schools, is in fact uh provides more information, and I'm very happy to also see and hear that the, that it's being available or made available in all sort of um other languages, so that uh folks who need translation or have opted in, um, you know, saying that they need to be receiving in a different language can uh receive the information, the language that they can understand, so I want to say thank you um for that. Um, I wanted to also touch on the hotspots for a moment, um, I'm just wondering, is that posted somewhere on our website? I know uh Ms. Martin mentioned that DTI had done a map as well, and is that somewhere where families are able to find that easily online?
Ms. Desmond?
We have not uploaded it on our website, but we can certainly do that, um, probably, we probably can have that done tomorrow. We have access, the curriculum team has access to the editing privileges on the website, so we've been uploading things as we receive them, so thank you, that's a great idea.
Yeah, and I think I also want to just say thank you for being responsive, I know, you know, initially provided some feedback on some of the resources, the at-home learning resources that you had posted there, and I just think, um, I appreciate everyone's responsiveness to feedback as it's being provided, and um I think the efforts to get the information out there in a number of different ways and in uh encouraging families to be accessing information in the way that they uh will, you know, look for it, whether it's through Facebook, Twitter, um, online, even the paper versions, I think you're really doing a tremendous job to get the information at the hands of people who need it. Um, one bit of information is, I only started receiving email communication this year when I was um elected to the school committee position, even though I had been providing uh email addresses the entire time my, my daughter has been in school, so I think that's just something I probably, at this point, it might be a little late, because we don't have people actually in schools, but um I wonder if going back over some of the um, you know, paperwork that we completed at the beginning of the school year, in fact, would have, capture some of the information, the email addresses that we may be missing for families, so just something to consider uh going forward, um, maybe not for right now, but sometime in the future, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Clark, and as further clarification for the committee, uh, two things came out from the Superintendent's Association, one was the closure announcement. That timeline uh was actually later and more delayed than what we could meet within our community. I was actually in conversation with those, uh, with the other superintendents, you remember, if you recall, we announced at noon, uh, the announcement that came out from the Superintendent's Association was approximately four or five o'clock that afternoon, uh, we needed to make that announcement at noon to make sure we communicate with families while they were in school. Uh, the second letter that came out uh related to remote learning, and as you heard from Dr. Hall, we've been in some intense conversations about what remote, our remote learning model will look like, but we can collaborate with all of our partners internally uh within the Lowell Public Schools, uh, hence the two reasons of why we're, our name is not listed there. I would uh respectfully request to the committee that each individual letter, each individual communication will have to make an individualized decision as to whether uh listing Lowell is in the benefit, to the benefit of our young people, and to the benefit of our community, or would further confuse or distract. In those two cases, the decision that we made was to leave Lowell out uh and to communicate individually to our community to keep clarity for our community. Uh, if leaving the name off creates more confusion, we'll have to revisit that decision, and I appreciate the committee's guidance on that, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, before we move on to nine, four, I just had a couple of uh comments, so um after listening to everybody on the committee, um, if we could just get uh regular updates on um what we're doing with the Chromebooks, how you handed them out today and how it goes forward. Um, uh, what, so we're out of school for at least a month, so some updates on the educational packets that are going out. Um, I know we're using the websites and things like that, are we taking advantage of Channel twenty-two? Um, and then, as some of the um committee members mentioned, uh, the upcoming budget, um, you know, I know what the plan is, but uh can we make sure we get from principals and from the administration a Plan B and a Plan C? Um, and then if we could just get an update on what we think the participation is um with our students and staff and teachers, uh, on how that's going over the next month. So that's all I have for that, and um we'll go to Article twenty-four request, Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, these are standard items that are on each committee uh agenda. Dr. Hall is available to answer any questions if needed, the next two are standard items, though, that appear on each committee agenda, the packets are submitted uh for your receipt.
Okay, thank you. Um, nine-five reports on motions. Uh, my motion, uh, I'm satisfied with the answer for that. And again, we'll just see where this whole situation takes us for, uh, summer, school, summer events. Um, nine-five point two, are you all set, Mr. Dakota?
Yes, very happy with that. Thank you very much, uh, to Dr. Gilroy for, um, clarifying, um, the, um, the report that, uh, gave us exactly how much recess time that is, uh, being offered to our children. So that I, uh, I want to say thank you again.
Okay, thank you. Um, nine-six and nine-seven, Mr. Superintendent, listed eligible teachers and personnel report?
Yes, these are the items that were, uh, that I, that these are another, the items that are listed and submitted for, uh, the committee's receipt. Uh, nine-six is, uh, nine-six and nine-seven.
Okay. Um, I skipped over reports on motions. Any questions on their standing motions by anybody? Okay, um, so I need a motion or re, uh, motion to accept the reports nine-one through nine-seven as a, uh, report of progress by Mr. Dillon, seconded by Ms. Doherty. All those in favor? Um, new business, budget transfer, Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Uh, Ms. Turner is, uh, online, available for any questions, uh, recommendations, approval as written.
Okay. Could you just, um, does anyone have any questions before I ask the question? Any committee members? Just speak up. I can't really see you. So if nobody has, okay. Uh, Ms. Turner, I just had a couple of questions. I just, I'm not sure what the re-transfer is are on, and what they're for. So.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Um, we, we're constantly doing transfers. If we have a budget account, a salary account that was fifty thousand dollars, but then we hire our teacher for forty. When we start to get to this time of the year where we're determining whether we have, um, surpluses or deficits in certain line items, when we try to project year-end balances, we start to clean up the account. So we'll move money from accounts that had, that look like they're going to have extra money and move it into accounts that are short. If we only had fifty thousand dollars in a science teacher account, but we hired someone for sixty-five, we're going to see that we're going to be short by this time in the, of the year. So we're constantly moving funds around. Um, this is a cleanup and it's, uh, you, you know, it's based on the year-end projections where we think that we're going to have savings in certain line items. So we're moving those account, um, funds to different lines.
So just for example, like some of the custodian accounts, um, it'll just say daily custodian, Robinson custodian, um, Lowell High custodian is a big one. So what do those mean?
Those are, well, if we're moving the money from or to, so some of the time we're moving money from an account. If we know that we have extra money in that account, we're moving it from that line to a line that we do need money. Also, one thing we, we learned when we were doing a, a review of the accounting system last year is there's a lot of coding errors. And so we're redesigning the chart of accounts for Munis. And when we do that, we create an account number that matches the Department of Ed's function code. We then have to move the funds into that line item, like Lowell High School custodian account. I think they had a five-one-two, like a, a, a number that didn't match what the DOE function code was. So when we created that function code, we had to move money into the account.
All right. So I can't tell if you're moving money in or out though.
Okay. So one, yeah, it's usually I'm looking at, I'm trying to open it up right now. It's from and to. The first section is a two. Like the two, all those first lines are two and all the next ones are from. So let me, I'm trying to get into it so I can see what you're looking at. So if on the spreadsheet that you see, that you see how on the, um, the second, underneath the word department, it says transfer to, all of those first sections down to the bottom where it says one point five million, all of those, um, go accounts that are receiving money. The transfer from of, is the second page and that says transfer from in the upper left-hand corner of the second page.
Right. The only, I don't know, the only comment I could make, and I don't know how the other, others feel is just, and, and I'm not, I'm just saying for checks and balances, this doesn't really make any sense to me. So, um, I, I'm not accusing anybody of doing anything. It's just, it doesn't make any sense to me. So I don't know where money's going from one account to the other. And, um, I don't know. It just, people will ask me all the time, why did you approve that? You don't know what it is. So.
So just so you know, this is a, like I said, this is a cleanup account. If you look at some of the froms, it's twenty-five cents. If we see twenty-five cents in a line item that we know is finished or two dollars and nine cents, twenty-two cents, three dollars and thirty-six cents. We don't want to leave any money behind when we're tight with money. So we're going to take every penny from every account number that's not going to be further used and move it into accounts that do need the money. So it's just a cleanup. It's, um, I mean, it's constant.
All right. So for example, on the second page, um, basic textbook, twenty-two cents.
Mm-hmm.
So whiz, I don't, so I'm not getting any information. Is it going from the original to the objective one?
So this is a from. And here's an example, we cut the schools off of spending, right? So they're no longer allowed to spend. So if they had a textbook account that had two dollars and nine cent left in it, if we leave that, all those two dollars and nine cents adds up to thousands of dollars when we could take that and use that for other spending. We don't want to leave any money behind. We want to use all of the money for the kids. So we take all the, um, accessible funds in lines that we know, you know, have extra money and we move it. Or like I said, if we're cleaning up the accounting system and recoding something to match the Department of Ed's coding, then if I create that new account, I have to move money into it from the wrong account. So, but using your example with the textbook account with the two dollars and nine cent, that's just like having, nobody can buy anything with two dollars and nine cent. Not only did they, they cut off, but they can't buy anything with it. So we're going to take all that and continue to clean up. Another example of a cleanup situation is this. We, we knew we were going to fast student funding. We were trying to do average staff salaries last year. Um, so we would base, if we had four teachers at the Pine Ot elementary teacher account, four teachers times an average of ninety thousand, we would put three hundred and sixty thousand in that account, not knowing who the teachers were going to be. Now, after the teachers were determined, but if the account, the actuals are three hundred and ninety thousand, we have to move thirty thousand dollars in there. It's, you know, it's when you're using average staff salaries, when you're cleaning up or when you're, you know, closing down the unused portions of account, it, we have to do it this way.
Right. Social workers, a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, one hundred and ninety. Where's that money going? Is that going into the social workers' account or out of it?
Coming from the social workers' account. If you want, what we could do to make it so that you can understand it, you see how this was a mass cleanup? What we could do in the future is lump them together. So you could see if, see, we do a huge from and a huge to. And just so you know, the audit and department, they don't let us do this without making sure each, they look at this before they approve it.
Right. Where, so where did that money, social workers just saying, we didn't spend that. So we're taking it out?
Right. It was in a, the wrong account. It was in a nine-nine, when you, that nine-nine-three number to the left.
Yeah.
Nine-nine-three, one oh-four, five one-five, one-two, one-three-five. We recoded that. Um, we recoded that to try to put social workers at individual schools. We were doing a project to clean up and make it more user-friendly. So we moved the funds.
Okay. All right. Any questions from any other members? Okay. Uh, hearing none. Uh, let's see. So we need a roll call on that one.
You're muted.
Yep. Um, Mary?
John, I.
Yeah. Okay.
I need a motion on the floor, John.
All right. Uh, so a motion by Ms. Clark, seconded by Mr. Dillon, roll call.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Mr. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey? Mr. Hoey?
I said yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Um.
I'm sorry. I didn't hear you.
Kind of vote present.
And Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Six days, one present approved.
Okay. Uh, ten-two approval of, uh, MOA club stipend for after-school activity.
Hello, excuse me?
Yep.
Hi, I, I was trying to, I'm thinking of, um, about the, uh, the, the listings that you have for eligible teachers.
Yes.
This is Marilyn Jonas. I'm sorry. I'm a speech pathologist of a college school. That, your list of eligible teachers for speech language pathology is wrong. Most, um,
Can I just, why, I'm sorry. Can I just ask, uh, why you're in the meeting? I'm sorry.
I was just, I was a public observer.
Right. So let me just ask, um, the clerk though, if you're not registered, you can't speak to that, Ms. Jan.
Was not registered to speak.
Right. So I'm just, so if you can just observe and we'll take your question tomorrow, which is, uh, policy of the meeting. If we're not registered, we don't, um, you're not eligible to speak. Is that all right? If you're going to hold your question till tomorrow?
Uh, Mayor, I'll follow up with her and find out what was wrong in the report.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So for our staff, to Mr. Mayor Leahy, if you, if you mind, if I can have a point of privilege, there's a lot of staff members on the video conference that may not be used to coming to school committee meetings because we're now at home and at a distance learning environment. Uh, so this is no disrespect to anyone. These are the rules of order that the committee has to follow. It's the rules of order. Uh, unfortunately, we will try to make sure, and I think Marilyn, I think that was you, we'll make sure we, uh, get to you to get the feedback. Uh, but for all, everybody that's, uh, listening in, it's just the rules of order that we follow by school committee policy, uh, of public speakers and public comment. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. Um, next we need, uh, ten-two. This is the superintendent?
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Hall, can you provide, uh, a description for the committee? The recommendations approval is written.
Yes, uh, this memorandum of agreement would, um, cause or allow the, uh, coaches and advisors and assistant coaches to continue to be paid, uh, for planned work and for additional, uh, virtual work, uh, for the winter and spring. Um, just to clarify, there are three advisor roles that started in January. Uh, so those individuals already began, um, their work in, it already initiated work or done substantial work prior to March sixteenth. It's my understanding for the coaches that the season, uh, started on, on or about March sixteenth. Um, but they also had planning before that, uh, as everyone knows, however, this season, uh, happened at short. Uh, in discussions with the athletic director, it's planned that the coaches, um, would, um, continue to communicate with the students and put out, um, workouts, uh, via email or through, uh, Zoom meetings. Uh, stay in touch with students and, uh, get them on the right course for next season or where they, uh, should go next year.
Okay. So ten-two club stipend and after-school activity. Could you give us some insight on that, please?
Doctor Hall?
Sure. The, uh, second one was planned, um, basically for, uh, weightlifting and conditioning. Uh, and it was going to be, uh, offered to students after school. Uh, it was envisioned that, um, fall and, um, winter athletes and the regular student body was going to be invited, uh, to attend as well and, uh, strength training, uh, nutrition. And, um, other, uh, sports-centric, uh, weightlifting was going to be, uh, encouraged and directed. Uh, it's planned that this would also, uh, happen, uh, virtually or through email communication as well if this was approved.
And we have, um, we have any total on this? How much this is costing on a, so I have ten-two. I have ten-two is first on mine. It has club stipends and then it says, I guess it just says club stipends. And then ten-three has advisor positions and then coach. So the first one, ten-two, Mr. Hall, is just club stipends?
So, um, Mayor, the, um, the clubs are basically like the, um, thirty or forty clubs at the high school office to students after school, which could be like outdoor adventure, chess club, drama club. Um, most of those are year-round. However, there's three, um, and Mr. Dakota can correct me if I'm wrong on this. I believe show choir and drama and color guard operate exclusively after January first. And it's my understanding that they've been working already from, uh, January all the way till March sixteenth. And in fact, um, I believe the show choir, if not wrong, has been doing, uh, virtual rehearsals according to Ms. DeVoso, the fine arts cheer. Uh, I didn't collect the figures on that when I had heard from Ms., uh, DeVoso on those three, that the activities had started in January, but Ms. Turner's staff was good enough today to, uh, provide the figure on what the, uh, coaches, athletic coaches and the assistants um, add up to in the budget. And that's a hundred and thirty-five thousand for the spring. That, uh, has some give and take in it because we have some new coaches who may be lower on the salary scale that goes one through seven years of experience. And then we have some coaches that moved up a year. So it's a hundred and thirty-five thousand, give or take, uh, five thousand where everyone would land ultimately on. But a hundred and thirty-five approximately is in the.
Okay, thank you. So, um, if I can, um, just say something from the floor before everyone speaks. Um, my position on this is, I don't know if we looked at it in depth or not, but I don't think we can afford to be paying for stipends, um, that, or uh, work that we're not going to have performed. There's other school districts that, um, if the season isn't, um, salvaged, uh, they're not going to be paying out for spring coach positions. Um, that's a hu- a lot of money. That's two positions, uh, maybe three positions that may be cut after this budgeting nightmare, uh, comes to fruition. Um, the advisor positions, not sure when it started, what they're doing, and same thing for the club stipends. So I ask that we proceed with caution. I don't know if this was discussed last week at the executive session. I can't participate in the teaching negotiations. Um, but from what they told me when I asked for, uh, advice, I can speak on, um, other unions that are represented by the UTL. So, um, I just don't, I think we have to be very cautious with our money from this point forward. So I will go right down the line to let people speak and we'll start with Ms. Clark. If you have any, if you have any comments on this?
No, I do not.
Okay. Mr. Dakota?
Yes, I, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I, I think that, um, as, as Dr. Hall mentioned, uh, a lot of these clubs and, and you'd have to go through with each club one by one to figure this out. Uh, but there are some clubs that operate all year long. And, uh, like, like I can refer to you vividly because I was that advisor for, uh, the show choir. Uh, that's a, that's a year-long, not just like, it's not even just September through June. It's all year. I mean, that, they, they are working, getting, getting shows ready, booking things and getting all of these other things done. Uh, so it is a, it is a year-long task. Uh, if you recall way back, um, when we ran into, uh, a, a budget situation where, uh, where we took a one-third cut of salaries for, uh, advisors. Do you recall that when, when, uh, Superintendent Scott was, was here?
Well, you're not going to like my answer. We didn't work. So there was a one-third cut because we didn't perform any duties. But that's, that's my take on that. So.
Okay. All right.
Same thing here. I just. Same thing here, I just, I, all I wanna do, if you're working already, that's fine. Um, my view is just, we have to be very careful with our money because these are gonna be positions that are gonna be cut in the future, so that's all I'm advising, um, so.
Okay.
John, Mr. Dillon, any questions?
Yeah, I can certainly speak, um, on the spring coaches. Um, you know, you can say that they're not gonna be working or they never started their season. They're, those coaches are gonna have as close an eye and as much contact with those kids as any of our staff that we have, um, and there's no question about it. Um, they will be, uh, keeping them, you know, they will keep, be keeping a close contact with them every day. Coaches are under, underpaid in the first place, uh, they're im- important to our kids and they're just as important as every other staff member and the effect that they have on their life over the course of the spring, uh, in keeping them active in one way or another. I, I think, um, it is, is, you know, warrants, warrants their stipend. The, um, and, and, you know, s- particular positions, I guess we can talk about, but man, those coaches are gonna, I, I know, I've worked with a lot of them, I know a lot of them. They're as good of staff members as we have and they are gonna be in contact with those kids, they already have been. They, they're, they're doing the job to the best of their ability to guarantee that. I certainly won't advocate for that, uh, to, yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Guardi.
I think you're on a two quick questions before I make my comment, and I think probably, um, Ms. Turner might be the best one for this, um. In terms of the year-round, um, activities, as my colleague, Mr. Dakota mentioned, uh, you know, the show choir and things like that, are those people paid as the year goes on, or do they get a check at the end of the school year?
They're paid in, um, the recall, repayment is winter, spring and, um, fall sport.
Okay, thank you. Second quick question, Ms. Turner, um, of the number of people that are getting these stipends, um, would you, would you say that most of them are current full-time employees of the district?
I, yes, I believe so.
Okay, so they're already working in our schools, they're teachers, primarily teachers, maybe some administrators, but they're already employees of the little public schools.
I believe so, yes.
Okay, so then, my last question, just to make sure for clarification, Dr. Hall, um, that ten point two is to add an advisor position, that's not one that we currently have? You wanna add a weight training advisor, that's what ten two is about, adding a new one?
Yeah.
Is that correct? That's correct. Okay, so I'm gonna say, I, I I feel very strongly that we want to, as much as possible, Desa gave us, uh, an advisory to pay our hourly employees, and I see those as our cafeteria workers, people like that. Uh, I know that we have, you know, most of our staff, ninety-nine percent of our staff, if not more, are working remotely, our teachers and we're, and our administrators, and we're still trying to work out what is the low remote learning plan, we have not been able to actually define that with our team yet. But as I am so concerned, and I have lived through these cuts, I was on the committee when we lost our librarians, which we never got back yet, right? So I don't wanna spend a hundred and forty thousand dollars on stipends for people that are already being paid to work remotely. Um, I, I think that, I, I'd love to give it to them, I'm sure they're working hard, they care about our kids, I absolutely value what they do and provide for our community, because for some kids, that is there. That's what gets them excited about going to school, is being part of a team, I know that, I was that kid, my kids were involved in after-school activities. But in this world we're living in, I think these people are already being, uh, covered because they're in our system, they're getting their full-time salaries, we still haven't even worked, we worked out how we're gonna be able to uh, remotely connect them to their students as full-time employees. Um, so I, I, I don't think that we should be adding this money on top of their uh, regular pay when we're already looking at such uncertain times going forward. So that's my take on that, and I definitely would not wanna add a new advisor position now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoey.
Thank you, Mayor, um, I'm very supportive of this, uh, all this about sports, I mean, you got thirty-three sports at the, in our schools, you got sixty-nine teams, you got a hundred and thirteen coaches at the high school alone, you got fifty-four coaches at the middle school level. All of these positions are already in your budget, a lot of these coaches are already talking to baseball players and all your spring sports players, because the MIAA recently, and I never talked about about MIAA, but recently gave some of our seniors hope that we're gonna have some type of season this year. Uh, we've cut about fifty thousand dollars out of our, our budget in athletics over the years. I'm glad Mr. Dillon's in charge of it, not, excuse me, I'm glad Mr. Dillon is in charge of it now, I mean, he just had to work his, uh, uh, rear end off, just getting a football coach for us, and people don't see that, you know how football is in law. But to me, we need to support this, uh, that hundred and, what, thirty-five, hundred and thirty-seven, it's in there. And if we don't do this and support these people, it's almost gonna be like what we're doing to our bus driver. Now, that's a different story, but these people, their money's in the budget, I don't think we should, uh, not pay them that money, because they're gonna probably go and look for something else to do again, and I don't think it's a good thing. Also, I'm supporting this, I would vote for this in a minute and I would make a motion to do that. So all I need is a second and I would approve that after everybody speaks. But, uh, very, very important to me, Mayor, this is in a time, I don't think we tell a hundred and sixty-seven people that we're not paying you because you're not working, that's not true, a lot of them are working, they work over the phone, they call these pitchers, they call the catchers, go do some, try to do some long toss with your father, whatever, be alone, be safe, but they're working already. Thank you very much for the time on this, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, um, you know, I, I understand actually both sides, I would say, of, of this argument and there's logic and reason and honestly, care and concern on both sides. So I, you know, this is a, a difficult one to kinda come down on. I will say that I do think that the, the coaches and the, the club advisors serve as a, as a critical connection point right now for our students. Um, and I think the key to this, like so much of, of everything else is that it's incumbent upon, on us, on the district, to ensure that the work is being done. Um, are, we have an athletic director in place who can be directing all of this. So that we can, you know, we, it would be very easy to justify what coaches are already doing. Um, you know, our coaches are reaching out to students, they're even for the, the new training, those two training positions. Show me the, show me the, the, the Zoom activities that they're doing with students on strength training that they're able to do remotely. Show me how they're developing nutrition and, and other, um, kind of, uh, you know, components they're able to share with students over time. You know, our, our coaches, again, most of them are teachers, most of them are, are already members of our staff. They have access to this, this technology and, and a lot of other resources that they can use, and I think that, you know, I have no doubt that they will be able to maintain really strong connections with some of our kids who won't be able to connect in a lot of other ways. Um, but I think it's incumbent upon us to be able to track that. And that's not hard, um, it's, you know, again, we have administrative staff whose job it is to monitor their activities when they're on the baseball field or, or anything else. It's the same kinda thing, it's just happening in a, you know, in a different format. Um, you know, and again, I can say from personal experience, you know, we have tracking metrics for remote, remote work. Uh, in my work, I'm sure for most of us who are working remotely, there is an ongoing metric that you need to meet their expectations, there's, you know, cycling back to, to, to review results. I mean, this is a very standard education model. Um, and I really do feel that if we, you know, our coaches are, they are, they have relationships and connections with students that at this point in time is worth, you know, an investment in. Uh, again, I understand the other, the concerns that, that other members have, have expressed and I respect that. Um, so I, you know, I certainly understand coming from a different perspective on this one, but to my way of thinking, if the administration can assure us that the, that there is, um, management and, and oversight going on, I, I support the, I will support, you know, paying these coaches and laying down the expectations that we're still expecting that they're doing the coaching work if they're on the playing field. Sorry, Mr. Hoey.
No, no, no problem with that. I love your input, Connie, I always like it.
I like being able to finish it.
Oh, did I do something wrong? I, I didn't mean to interrupt you if I did.
We're good.
I know one thing, I'd never wanna play you in basketball or golf, I know you could beat me at both, but I could take you on in boxing, I think I might beat you there, that's about it. I know your father was a great athlete.
Make a joke about that.
That's all right. I have no problem.
Thank you, um, just one more fo- follow-up, this strength and conditioning, is that a full-time job or is it every season, or how does that work?
Uh, Mayor, it was envisioned to be an hour and a half to two hours every day after school, um, starting, um, for the spring semester all the way to July first.
What about the fall and winter?
Um, it's on the lowest scale of advisor stipends, the athletic director had asked me to ask the committee to have an additional stipend for summer and the fall, but I elected just to go with this one first to see how successful uh, the program was. He did envision that there would be seventy to a hundred kids that would wanna participate in this, and I think I wrote in my memo that we envisioned a lot of wrestlers, basketball players, uh, field hockey players, soccer would all participate in this to get ready, uh, for the fall and winter season.
All right, so it's just, it's a one, it's one position and it's just in the spring?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, all right. Um, so I need a motion by, just, seconded by, um, Ms. Martin, uh, roll call on ten two.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Mr. Arty?
No.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Uh, no.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Five yeas, two nays, approved.
Uh, motion by Ms. Clark, seconded by Mr. um, Dakota on ten three. Roll call?
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Sorry?
No.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
No.
Martin?
Yes.
Five yeas, two nays, approved.
Okay. Um, that's the end of the agenda. Um, so before we adjourn, Mr. Superintendent, if, um, you took note of all the updates that we could use weekly, um, that would be helpful to the school committee?
Thank you, yes, I believe you also, every committee member got invitations, we either, at this point, either have a committee meeting or a phone check-in with myself. Uh, please do continue that conversation, that communication, because this situation is evolving rapidly. And I will make sure that I get you every bit of information that I can as soon as I have it. Uh, and I wanna thank all committee members again for your continued support and guidance, and thank you to the entire community. Uh, these are unprecedented times, but we will get through it together.
Okay, thank you. Do I need a motion by Ms.?
Mayor, Mayor, could I just say one, one quick thing, please, to the superintendent? I, I sent you, Mayor, I sent the superintendent a, a letter from a, a concerned parent this morning, and it's about seniors, and, uh, if the superintendent could address maybe what I sent him this morning uh, about that situation, uh, just, uh, I don't think we said enough tonight about the poor seniors that are leaving, to be honest, which I wish I brought more of it up. But if you could touch on that, Mr. Superintendent, about what you're gonna try to help the seniors, she, I'd like to hear something.
Yeah, I think, uh, that was.
Just superintendent, you could also, we have not made any decision about graduation yet, right? So people are concerned about that and that'll come at a later date, I would assume, right?
Yes, I, I probably feel more questions, uh, from parents of seniors than any other particular age group, actually, and it, uh, relates to two things, uh, graduation and prom. Uh, w- we haven't made any decisions regarding either, we're making those decisions as we know, uh, that, as we learn about the spread occurring with this particular virus, uh, so we're trying to hold every decision until, until the latest possible minute for us to be able to make that decision. Uh, right now, I'm very hopeful that we'll be returning to school on May fourth, and I'm hopeful if, as if, if we're returning to school on May fourth, both of those, uh, moments for our young people will occur and will occur in person. Uh, if for some reason we cannot, then we will take up those conversations and figure out how we make those memories happen for our families. Uh, and we'll do that again with passion for our community and for our children. The conversation I had with Mr. Hoey earlier largely related to the item that you just approved on the agenda tonight, which is extending out the licenses for at, online curriculum for youngsters to make sure they continue to proceed through their credit, to make sure all of our youngsters can earn their credit, uh, continuing to work through, and I see, uh, Mr. George is still on the screen, we're working through with Mr. George to make sure we can provide, uh, clear guidance, uh, for our teachers, to make sure our teachers are interacting with our students, that those credits are being earned, so that no one hopefully has any type of delay in earning their diploma. That's a conversation that ultimately would have to be taken up by the committee, but we don't foresee bringing that to you at this time. Uh, we believe that the remote learning model that we have, uh, planned will roll out and that our, uh, seniors will be getting the instruction that they need, so that they're ready for the next step in life, uh. It ultimately, I do think, Mr. Hoey, that some of the concern also comes down to the ceremonies themselves. And that's gonna be a conversation that if unfortunately we need to take up that conversation, that'll be a conversation that we'll have to take up at a later time. But I'm hopeful we don't have to take up that conversation, I'm hopeful we can all follow social distancing requirements and that May fourth, we can come back, uh, to session. I miss our kids, our teachers miss our kids, and I know our kids miss school.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, so motion by Ms. Arty, seconded by Mr. Hoey to adjourn, all those in favor?
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.